Goye Gonzalez Delakia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Shade Faschakun.
Here.
Trish Bodie. Paul Gautier.
Here.
Nikosi Nelson.
Here.
Francesca Romans. Shade Faschakun, did I miss you?
It is 6:16 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is my pleasure to welcome Oliver Bray and Elijah Van Tatenhoof to lead us tonight in the pledges from Camacho Elementary. So those two handsome young guys, come on up and lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we will do the Texas pledge. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you Elijah and Oliver, we appreciate you. Next, we're going to move to our Spotlight on Learning featuring Camacho Elementary School. Yay Camacho, come on down.
Good evening, we are Camacho Elementary. We want to say thank you so much to President Delakia and the Board of Trustees and Dr. Grissom tonight for having us here to celebrate our amazing school. I am Wendy Gonzaba, the very proud principal of Camacho Elementary and it is my honor and privilege to present to you today some of our students and our staff that are going to give you a brief presentation on how we create safe, innovative, and inclusive learning environments at Camacho Elementary through Leander ISD's one and only social emotional learning lab called Mission Control led by our counselors. And we also have a Shine Bright Coalition led by some of our staff members that focus on positive student culture as well as we have our enrichment teacher and another one of our amazing first grade teachers to talk about student initiatives that lead to goal-setting, growth, cultural awareness, and all the other amazing things that help our Cosmos to shine bright everywhere they go. So I'm going to turn it over to the people you really want to hear from tonight, and that's our Camacho Cosmos.
Hello, I am Barbara Jean Burton and I'm a special ed teacher at Camacho Elementary. I also do resource and inclusion. Here at Camacho, we are passionate about helping to shape students into productive citizens of our community and the world. As Shine Bright Coalition leads, we work with students and faculty to design assemblies, facilitate buddy classes, support special events, and showcase the incredible students of Camacho. It's more than a school spirit, it is a structure for safety, belonging, and joy. At Camacho, shine isn't just a motto, it's a mindset. It stands for safety, honesty, inclusiveness, never gives up, and empowers all.
And these values are embedded in our daily systems, our language, and the way our students and staff show up for one another each and every day. Tonight, we're honored to share how our campus brings safe and innovative learning environments through Shine Bright. Through embedded social emotional learning systems, students, voice, and inclusive enrichment opportunities, Camacho is a place where learners feel seen, supported, and inspired. Starting with Eli, you'll hear from both students and staff about how we create space for every child to belong, grow, and lead.
Hi, I'm Eli in fifth grade. I'm in Quest and Broadcast Team. In the Broadcast Team, we help with the announcements and blast off assemblies. We get to create segments about stuff students and teachers are doing, and it makes school feel inclusive, and I love being a part of it.
Hi, I'm Natalie in fifth grade, and I'm in the Kindness Club. In Mission Control, I like to start when we start with a mindful movement and do stuff like crafts and brain talks. Once we made calm down bottles, and it helps me feel calm when I get anxious.
Hi, I'm Oliver in fifth grade. I like Mission Control too, and I like helping, and I like helping celebrate how Cosmos shine bright. I even gave a challenge to the teachers at a blast off assembly to give a starburst shout out to another teacher so all teachers could be celebrated. Mr. Crick had outsmarted me and wrote one big shout out to all the teachers.
Hi, I'm Adora, I'm in the Kindness Club and buddy classes there we help littles with reading and writing skills and being a friend, and shining bright all throughout the campus. It feels good to be someone they look up to.
Hi everyone, I am Anna Leffers and I am one of the counselors at Camacho Elementary. And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about Mission Control and what we do in there. Mission Control is our SEL Lab at Camacho Elementary, and it's actually the only thing like it in the district. In Mission Control, the teachers and all of their classes get to come in twice a month to do lessons and learn and talk about all their emotions, and how to handle big feelings, and how our brain works sometimes. We also have something cool in each of the classrooms so that kids have the tools they need, not just inside of our SEL Lab, but also inside the classrooms whenever they need it as well. We have created Mission Control toolboxes for them and landing pads for each of the classrooms.
Hi, I'm Vivian in fifth grade. I'm in Quest where we do projects that teach us to use critical thinking skills to solve problems on our own. I'm also an Acre on the Broadcast Team where we help kick off the day with announcements, recognitions, and information about Camacho. I also help with blast off assemblies every Friday morning.
Hi, my name is Ms. Pascal and I teach first grade. And at Camacho, we set our own goals, the students set their own goals, and track their own progress. And as a result, our students are motivated and confident.
Hi, my name is Valentina. I like to track my goals, Camacho is the best.
As the Quest teacher, I work with teachers and students to bring engaging and challenging enrichment to every grade. Whether it's pulling small groups, co-teaching, or designing fun thinking tasks, everyone gets a chance to stretch their learning.
I do enrichment with Ms. Gallin too, in fifth grade. It pushes my brain to work harder in a good way.
Hi, I'm Nia. My family and I got to dance in our powwow dresses at a blast off assembly for Native American Heritage Month. I was a little nervous to dance in front of the whole school, but everyone really enjoyed it and made me feel proud to be myself.
You wouldn't know that they've been practicing for days and days and days on end, and coaching each other how nervous they are, but they did a fantastic job. So we truly appreciate the ability and the honor to be able to showcase our amazing school, and Sage, you will get to say something, I promise. And our amazing school and how we shine bright in everything we do. And like Coach G said, it's not just a motto, it is our way of being at Camacho Elementary, creating global citizens that are going to carry on and shine bright, not just in their classrooms, not just on our campus, but everywhere in our community and around the world. And Sage is going to end with a big thank you. Sage also danced on the stage in front of the entire school with her sister and her family. So thank you so much for having us tonight, we hope you enjoyed our presentation.
Thank y'all so much, we're going to come over there and take a photo with y'all, so if y'all want to hang out for a second. Alright, that was amazing, can we give them a big round of applause? Thank you Camacho, thank you staff at Camacho, and thank you parents and friends and families of all the students that drove out here to cheer on their students, so thank you. Next, we're going to move to our video recognitions, and we're going to watch a video highlighting some of the great work that's being done in Leander ISD.
Hello and welcome back, I'm Riley Mix, a junior at Vista Ridge High School. Can you believe we're already at the end of April?
I know, where's this, I'm gone. My name is Alexis Anderson, a junior at Vista Ridge High School. Students and staff have been doing amazing things across Leander ISD, let's take a look. We're taking the pitch and celebrating several high schools for their accomplishments at this year's UIL State Soccer Championships.
Let's start with the Cedar Park Girls Team who won their first ever soccer state title in program history thanks to a three to one victory over Frisco Wakeland. Senior Meredith Colts was named MVP of the match with two stellar goals. The Vandergriff Boys Team also claimed their very first state soccer title with a commanding three to one win over Mesquite. James Heeman capped off the celebrations with an MVP award of his own. Plus, scoring big in heart and hustle, Vandergriff Girls and Vista Ridge Boys ended their seasons as state semifinalists in their respective brackets. Congratulations, this unforgettable season has been unmatched. In CTE News, the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps had their state competition recently, and there should be no surprise when I say that some of our high schools showed up and showed out in their respective competitions.
In the Air Force category, Unit TX 2007, based out of Leander High School, placed in the top three in five different competitions, consisting of different drills and fitness tests. They racked up two first place wins with a couple of second place and third place nods. Over in the Navy category, Lone Star Company, based out of Vista Ridge High School, also earned top three honors in competitions. They truly shined in the orienting category where they showed off their skills navigating a course with a compass and map, a challenge that earned them first place. These students went on to earn several second and third place finishes in their respective armed and unarmed drills. These are all amazing accomplishments, we're so proud of everything you guys have achieved. We're not done with CTE just yet. Vandergriff Robotics Team made some noise at the FRC State Championship.
Also known as Team Valor 6800, they partnered up with several other teams and went undefeated in the playoffs, taking home first place. This win also earned them the Apollo Division's Industrial Design Award and a spot at the World Championship where they were named the Johnson Division finalist captain and second place. Congratulations Vipers, way to show the world what you're made of. LISD's FTC Teams have their state competition next month, and we wish them the best of luck. The Glenn High School Drum Line is making history, they haven't won just one state championship, not just two, but they are now three time champions.
The Grizzlies competed at the Texas Color Guard Circuit and won it all in the Percussion Scholastic Open Division. This is the third year in a row that they've won it all in this category. Congratulations Glenn Grizzlies, keep up the great work. Proll out the red carpet because we have some musical stars in our district.
At the 12th Annual Heller Awards, all six of our high schools were nominated in a multitude of categories, and some walked away winners. Leander High's Avery Linden won Best Lead Performer in the Female category for her portrayal of Judy Burnley in Nine to Five. Sticking with the Lions, Maya Vaughn was presented the Community Impact Award. It wasn't just the performers who shined bright. For the second year in a row, Cedar Park's Charlotte Adair earned the Student Stage Management Award for her amazing work on Titanic the Musical. Now right here at Vista Ridge, our fellow Rangers won Best Musical Direction for their performance of Once Upon a Mattress. It's Administrative Professionals Week, and we have so many people we want to celebrate around the district. From admin assistants, registrars, and office aides.
To all of the bookkeepers, receptionists, and attendance clerks. We appreciate you all so much, and our friends at Larkspur Elementary want to show their gratitude as well.
Hey Mrs. Will, it's Admin Professionals Week here at LISD. What's your favorite thing about our administration?
Hey Ms. Schreiber, I am so happy you asked that question because our admin professionals make us feel so loved and supported, and they're always there for us whenever we need them. What about you?
I agree 100%. What I especially love is they always answer my kindergarten questions, no matter how big or small. Really appreciate all of their help.
I want to give a shout out to all the front office people who hold the door when everybody comes in and when it's dismissal. Thank you for doing that every single day.
We would love to give a big shout out to all the administrative professionals across the district. Thank you for being the calm in the chaos, the friendly faces at the front desk, and the glue that holds it all together. We love you so much.
Thanks to the front office for all we do at Larkspur Elementary, we appreciate you.
We are so thankful for our admin professionals here at Larkspur. Shout out to Ms. Powell, Ms. Pace, and Ms. Trout, we love y'all.
We're about a month away from the end of the school year, and I'm sure we'll have even more to celebrate the next time we see you.
Let's hear it one more time for all of these amazing accomplishments because we're one community.
One family.
One LISD.
Very cool, thank you SER for putting that together. Next is the Citizen Comments portion of our agenda. And before we watch a short introductory video, I'm going to share some other information and read a comment. "The Board appreciates our community's engagement in tonight's meeting and your valuable input provided through Citizen Comments. In accordance with Leander ISD Policy BED Local, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures in order to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board. This evening, we have 52 individuals signed up to speak and in addition to the lengthy list of topics for the boards to consider. Normally, the board would allow each speaker in public comment up to 90 seconds for his or her presentation, but due to the high number of individuals who will be speaking this evening, we are adjusting that time to 60 seconds per speaker so that we may hear from everyone and still have time remaining to conduct the business of the district." Before we start, we're going to watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Alexis Anderson, I'm a junior at Vista Ridge High School. The District and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizen Comment Agenda item. This has dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The District believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you've read the guidelines specified in the Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone, please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, or just tell them that you would like to chat later. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer, and focus on your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please, conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Alright, we're going to start with Speaker Number One. If Speaker Number Two and Three could just line up back there where Speaker One is, that way we can move things along. But Speaker One, you can come all the way up here to Daniel, and he'll help you with the mic. There you go, thank you Daniel. Whenever you're ready, you can start.
Kasumi, a third grader at Fabian Elementary. Fabian has amazing staff members. Our counselor, Ms. Nahosa, talks with kids who are authentic, has high anxiety, and for sometimes Panther ambassadors. My teacher, Ms. Cassius, is a strict and funny teacher. Our specials teachers, Coach Stone, Ms. Ray, and Mr. Sullivan have amazing talents, from sports to art to music. All the students from Fabian have big hearts, all of them together could fill up the sky. Our librarian, Ms. Kalisha, has a quiet voice, but her knowledge of books is incredible. Teachers thrown up help us prepare for start, but all the teachers and staff members help us students get past our challenges. Fabian might be small, but it's the best, that's why you should keep it open, thank you.
Thank you Speaker Number One. Speaker Number Two, come on up to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Kalen and I'm in the third grade at Noman Elementary. I really want to save Noman because I like my teachers, I love learning, and I like to interact with my friends. Noman is my neighborhood school, and living close helps me do all the things I love because I feel connected to the school and those around me. Closing Noman would cut out a part of my community that is very important to myself and those around me. I know you're trying to make the best of a bad situation, but I really hope you reconsider any decisions that hurt our community.
Thank you Speaker Number Two. Speaker Number Three. Speaker Number Three is trying to pull his brothers up. Come on brothers, he wants some support.
Thanks. Hi, my name is John, I'm a student at Noman Elementary in fourth grade. I would like it if you don't close the school because I have some of the best teachers there. It brings so much memories and joy. And I think that Noman is the best elementary school a kid like me could ask for. I got friends there, it's just amazing, 10 out of 10. It's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you, next we're going to move.
Hello, my name is Isaac.
Thank you speakers, we appreciate y'all. Next, we're going to move on to Speaker Number Four. And if Speaker Number Five, Six want to, just go to the back of the room and line up. We can keep two up there at a time. Speaker Four, whenever you're ready, you can start.
Hi, I'm Candace Walner, I have a first grader at Noman Elementary and a sixth grader here at CPMS. We bought our home 12 years ago, which is within walking distance of both schools. We love it here. Many of Noman's students, educators live within the area zone for Noman too. We are standing on that zone ground right now in this. We are standing on that zone ground right now in this room. I am proud to serve Nauman and our PTA is volunteer coordinator this year. Parent involvement is vital to the operations of an elementary school and its PTA, which provides a large amount of funding for programming and supplies that a public school's budget simply does not cover. Let's skip ahead. I honestly don't know if there's anything anyone can say to change the trajectory of our school's futures. I have to trust in all of you. Please do the right thing and figure out another way to save some money. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Four. Speaker Number Five.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Nielsen. I had something prepared, but I think I'll speak from the heart instead. I have twin boys who are 10 years old and attend fourth grade at Nauman Elementary. Both of them receive special services. They say when one door closes and a window opens. And for me, that was Nauman Elementary. They go above and beyond. It's not just a job, it's a calling. And the community, and that's what the culture is at Nauman, it's a community. And I hope that you come and visit the classrooms and hear the kids laugh and see the teachers, how they work together. And truly, I hope that you visit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Five. Speaker Number Six.
Hi, my name is Maggie Bond, and I have two Nauman Knights. And I would just ask that you continue the community engagement because from our standpoint, we don't fully understand. Like, we hear we're closing elementary schools, we're repurposing them, but we're also building elementary schools. So for us, like the layperson, it doesn't make a lot of sense. It would be really helpful if we got a comprehensive analysis that showed the cost, the savings, but not just one year out, like three years out. Because from our perspective, we're concerned that this is just a Band-Aid and that we are just kicking the can down the road, and it's going to actually be higher costs in the long run. And then just to echo, like, Nauman is just so very special. It would be really hard on our community. My oldest wouldn't get to walk the halls after he graduated in his cap and gown, so, because he would be the very last fifth grade class. So anyways, thank you so much for your time, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Six. Speaker Number Seven.
Good evening. I'm Paul Fuller, a proud Fabian parent of two, soon-to-be-three kids, and a local business owner deeply involved in Cedar Park. I serve on the Board at CPYL, which plays a key role in making this place great and a great place to raise a family. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about our schools. I strongly oppose any plan to repurpose Fabian or any central school into administrative offices, early childhood centers, or high school facilities. Families here live in walkable neighborhoods, close to the new Cedar Park Library, the Bell District, and the upcoming shops at Bell Boulevard. This area is growing, not declining. Closing neighborhood schools without a clear plan risks leaving buildings like Fabian on Cypress Creek and the cornerstone of our community for 50 years, empty and forgotten. Let's explore better solutions. Let's transform the central schools into small schools of innovation, something that keeps families here and strengthens what's already great about Cedar Park.
Thank you, Speaker Number Seven. Speaker Number Eight. He was seven, I think. You're eight.
Good evening. My name is Bella Veer, and my son is fourth grader at Nauman Elementary. I'm here because this school, our school, deserves more than a quiet repurposing. It deserves a future. Nauman isn't just where my son learns how to read, write, and do math. It's where he learns kindness, courage, and value of belonging. It's the kind of school where the principal knows your name, not because you're in trouble, but because it feels like home. As a European, I deeply value tradition, and tradition only comes with time. For 25 years, Nauman has been place of joy, safety, and pride. Closing our school would break more than hearts. It would break the rhythm of this community. Closing school might be called a hard decision, but it's an easy fix. Real leadership finds a way forward, not a way out. Our school is more than a building. It's a promise. Please don't be the ones who break that promise. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Eight. Speaker Number Nine.
Hi, Nauman Mom here, bringing my concern that the Long Range Planning Committee is using one or two data points for baseline of the future of schools. Our schools are the heartbeat of this entire community, and that's a huge piece that's missing in all of this factor and all of this planning. Nauman's one of the most beautiful examples of how a little school can be the heart of a pocket community, the heart of a neighborhood. I would challenge the Board, I would challenge the Committee, to come to our school when that bell rings at the end of the day. Watch those kids roll out. Watch that crowd of parents talk and interact with each other. Watch the kids pour into the parks and to our neighborhood, not home on their phones. That's what we provide. It is a community, and it's a piece. The neighbors who are retired are watching those kids, keeping an eye on them as they go. We're all a part of it. So how can Leander strive to have the best schools and set a precedent by repurposing a building and throwing away all the tradition? We love our school and teachers, so please reconsider keeping Nauman alive as the heart of our community.
Thank you, Speaker Number Nine. Speaker Number Ten.
Hello, I'm Paul Kaiser. I'm a father of two Nauman students, and I'm speaking today in support of keeping Nauman Elementary open as a pre-K through fifth grade campus and removing it from consideration for repurposing within the Long Range Planning Committee's framework. When we moved here, we were drawn to Leander ISD for the neighborhood schools, and specifically to Nauman Elementary because it was a well-established school. The first meeting we attended at Nauman, when our son was kindergarten aide, showed us what a supportive and welcoming community it is. I feel this engaging part of our community would be lost by repurposing the building for a more regional use. I suggest revitalizing unused spaces in low enrollment campuses rather than closing and relocating students. For instance, unused classrooms at multiple elementary campuses could house new early childhood classrooms rather than dedicating an entire campus for that purpose. The campuses already have an administration, support staff, and similar age students after all. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Ten. Speaker Number Eleven.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Miller, and I am a proud Leander ISD employee. I'm a teacher at this very campus. Some of you guys have been in my classroom. I've taught some of your children as well. But tonight, I'm here as a mom. I'm here as a mom. Oh, sorry, I'm losing my voice too. My daughter is currently a first grader at Nauman, and I hope that my son will enter kindergarten there in 2026. I was recently lucky enough to volunteer at Field Day and the first grade field trip to the Thinkery. I saw students who were engaged, who were learning, who were working together, and who were just full of joy. As a fellow educator, I'm impressed by the staff and by the leadership there. I know that we all want what's best for our students, and I know that there is not an endless supply of money. But tonight, what I'm asking the Board to do is to do what it's done in the past when it's faced with a challenge: to get creative, to leverage all the smart people that we have in this community, and to find a solution that meets the needs of the district while saving this campus. So, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Eleven. Speaker Number Twelve.
Good evening. I'm here because I'm concerned that a sign-in sheet from a special meeting of the Special Programs Parent Advisory Council was shared in response to a public information request. This sign-in sheet contained names of special programs' parents and students. The event was specifically marketed to special programs' families and addressed unique and sensitive issues for special program families. This release of personal identifying information is a violation of privacy and undermines the trust the special programs' staff and parent leaders have been working tirelessly to build. Further, this breach of trust will make it less likely for families to participate in other support groups in the future. I ask the Board and Administration to advocate for privacy protections for special programs' families when participating in LISD's special programs events. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Twelve. You see, 13 is not checked in. Is 13 here? No, 13 is not. Speaker Number 14.
Hello. I've been part of the Nauman family for 10 years. Even though my youngest child will graduate from Nauman in 2026, I'm here advocating for Nauman, for my friends and neighbors with younger children, and for future generations, because I've experienced how vital Nauman is to this community. The teachers and staff are so caring and dedicated. Families are very involved in the school. The school is surrounded by neighborhoods, and it's ideally situated as an elementary school. Families walk to school together in the mornings, and then after school, students walk home together for afternoon playdates. Research has shown that school closures have negative short-term and long-term impacts on students. Nauman is a high-performing, beloved neighborhood school, and it should remain open as Nauman Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 14. Speaker 15.
Good evening. I'm Jason McGee, parent of a seven-year-old, a four-year-old, soon to attend at Nauman Elementary. I'm here tonight to make one thing clear: A neighborhood school should not be closed or repurposed. This violates clear commitments made by the Board to support neighborhood schools and small school models. Research confirms what we already know. Neighborhood schools improve academic outcomes, lower stress, and increase engagement. Nauman is a model of what's working. 49% of the students are proficient in math and 72% in reading, and has a student-teacher ratio of 11 to 1. All of these are far better than national or state averages. It also has one of the lowest absentee rates in the district. Repurposing Nauman into an early childhood center or high school is impractical and costly. The district is already investing 60 to 80 million to build a new elementary school, making it illogical and irresponsible to close existing high-performing ones. You promise community engagement and smart solutions, not disruptive closures and wasteful repurposing. Honor your commitments.
Thank you, Speaker 15. Speaker 16. 16.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lacey Kaiser. I'm both a parent and a teacher at Nauman. I'm speaking tonight to request that Nauman be removed from consideration for closure. Nauman is a neighborhood school, as you've heard, where our families gather and grow our most meaningful relationships. I spend all of my time at Nauman, and I love it. I love the students I serve, the parents I engage with personally and professionally, and I love my fellow teachers and administration. And all of this is possible because Nauman, excuse me, I'm sorry. Nauman is our neighborhood school, and we would love to have more littles to teach if perhaps a solution was to add more to early childhood classes. And I just want to draw attention to the yellow ribbon that I received when I came in. This is signifying support for all of our central elementaries. And then this is our Nauman pin. So thank you all so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker 16. Next, Speaker 17.
Nauman Knights, raise your hand. Yes, so, what is the Board's plan for Nauman's teachers and staff? If I were a principal and I knew my school was closing in a year, I would struggle to recruit, more importantly, retain quality teachers. Our teachers deserve stability. Their livelihoods and families could be completed uprooted. They've invested in our school, and we've invested in them through time, training, and support. The commitment deserves respect and a clear plan moving forward. Nauman's feeder pattern is a strong, students, alumni, and parents, volunteers, return year after year, mentor and support the community that helped shape them. From senior walks to school events, they walk these halls to reflect on where it all began. If Nauman is gone, where will they return? What message does that send to generations coming up behind them? Our staff, students, alumni, and parents deserve more than uncertainty. We deserve answers.
Thank you. Next, Speaker 18.
Good evening. My name is Jean Edwards. I have two children at Nauman Elementary. In 2009, my wife and I moved into this neighborhood based on the information we learned about Leander ISD and these schools. We wanted to be here. Fast forward to 2020, our family unfortunately experienced a tragedy, and we're a home burned down. Two months after that, Nauman Elementary sent us a card wishing us well and that we could return quickly to the neighborhood. That's how embedded they are in our community. My children weren't even at the school yet. They weren't even enrolled yet. That's how much they mean to this community.
Thank you, Speaker 18. Speaker 19 is not signed in. Speaker 19. We're gonna move to Speaker 20.
Evening. 192 steps. It takes 192 steps for our children to leave the comfort and safety of their home to then arrive at the comfort and safety of Nauman Elementary. It takes 192 steps for our children to meet up with friends and other families at Nauman's playgrounds for playdates, school festivities, and other community events. Hundreds of families and community members live within the range of those 192 steps, enjoying the benefits afforded by having Nauman nearby. These are examples of the intangibles that you don't see when you analyze the possibility of closing a neighborhood school. An entire community of people will be impacted by this decision, and I've yet to hear any logical reasons as to why closing a school and opening new schools will magically save the district money. This decision serves to kick the problem down the road, only to deal with it later, when the problem will inevitably be worse. Rest assured, there is no later. I implore you to seek better budgetary adjustments to maintain our neighborhood schools. We deserve better. The schools and teachers deserve better. Our children deserve better.
Thank you, Speaker Number 20. Speaker 21.
So I'm also here to talk about Leander ISD's release of sensitive identifying data regarding students with disabilities. This occurred when LISD's legal team released the sign-in sheet for Special Programs Parent Advisory Council meeting. The F in FERPA stands for family. Families who rely on, support, collaboration, and safety inside our system. SPAC is an LISD council established specifically to support students with disabilities and their families. As both a founding member and current executive board member of the SPAC, I know firsthand that families and students who attend our events do so with the understanding and trust that these are protected spaces as required by law. I've been in this district since 2015. I witnessed the cap-and-denie mentality that destroyed trust and harmed our most vulnerable individuals. And right now, I'm here to tell you that all of that work that we have done since then, all of the trust, everything that we have built up to this point, is teetering on the edge of being completely trashed by your legal team, just to be polite. Fix it, please. I've sent you a roadmap on how you can start, and I look forward to your update to our disability community.
Thank you, Speaker 21. Speaker Number 22.
Good evening. My name is Anne, and I'm the parent of a third grader at Fabian Elementary. And I have a four-year-old daughter who's chomping at the bit to join her brother in 2026. I'm here to advocate for all of our neighborhood schools facing closure, but I want to focus on Fabian for a moment. Fabian has historically been a Title I school. This year, we landed just outside that 40% threshold, but that number shouldn't be ignored. In Buttercup Creek, the subdivision surrounding Fabian, 25.4% of children live below the federal poverty line. Does closing our community school create more equity, more accessibility? No. At the January 23 Board Meeting, Gloria, you said, and I quote, "I think when we talk about our mission and we talk about our vision, I think when we talk about the foundation of Leander ISD, we're talking about our community schools." So I'm here to ask all of you, does that mission, does that vision apply to the entire district? Or does it not apply to all of our children? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 22. Speaker 23. 23.
Hello, my name is Juan Cox. I'm a proud parent of Nauman Elementary, where my daughter has strived, both academically and socially. She's been in the class program since kindergarten, consistently scoring 100% on district assessments, and I know a big part of her success is thanks to the smaller class sizes and dedicated, caring staff. I understand low enrollment is a concern, but I ask that we look at this as an opportunity to innovate, not a reason to close. Instead, what if we turn Nauman into a magnet school with a project-based learning model, or PBL for short, where students learn by solving real-world problems, such as figuring out how to cut down waste at school? Schools in San Diego and Norfolk, Michigan have seen strong results and increased enrollment by using this PBL model. This could be something that sets Nauman and the district apart and brings even more life into the community. In closing, I just want to say we have a real chance to turn this into something transformative. In closing, I just want to say we have a real chance to turn this into something transformative. I'm happy to offer my time to help at ISD Community Workshop to explore this idea.
Thank you, Speaker 23. Speaker 24.
Sorry, I'm short. My name is Suzanne Amicham. I have a kindergartner and a second grader at Nauman Elementary. When we bought our home within walking distance of this school fourteen years ago, it was on purpose. Being near the school was vital to something both my husband and I felt. Hearing that there's a possibility that it could be closed or repurposed has been very hard to hear. Schools like Nauman and Fabian are community treasures that have real students, real educators, and staff, and real families in them. I'm proud to serve Nauman and be our PTA's Book Fair Chair. Something to consider here is parent and student engagement. If you shift our schools and shift our students and our parents, you lose a lot of that support. I'm really going off track here, but as I left the house tonight, my second grader looked at me and said, "Go, mommy, save our school."
Thank you, Speaker 24. Speaker 25. Twenty-five.
Good evening. I'm Zach Marshall. I'm a proud Nauman parent of two. Nauman isn't just a school. It's the heart of our neighborhood. We walk there. We volunteer. Our kids play baseball together. They go to Cub Scout campouts with many of the parents in this room right now. We're not just closing a building. You're breaking up a community. I grew up in Longo Vista with a graduating class of sixty-six kids. From that tiny school, we sent kids to West Point, MIT, UT, and Stanford, and that small school experience just shaped me. As a professor at University of Texas now, I know how much early learning environments matter. That's what I want for my kids. We love Nauman because it's small. Teachers know our children, their names, their stories. Even my son's kindergarten teacher still comes to birthday parties, and she's been retired for two years. Please don't rush to close the school. There are better creative options. Nauman works. It's worked for twenty-seven years, and our kids are thriving. Don't fix what isn't broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 25. Speaker 26.
Hi, my name is James West. I have a first grader at Nauman. I wanted to parrot something that a few of the other speakers have already kind of touched on, which is walking to school. It's great. I don't know if you've ever walked a kid to school. It rules. It's like one of my favorite parts of the day. We've done it basically every day since Theo started there in kindergarten. Gives him a chance to exercise, which helps with his ultimate focus at school. It gives him a chance to play with his friends. It gives me a chance to commiserate with other parents about how hard parenting is. And it's a wonderful way to start the day. If Nauman is repurposed and we have to go to a different school, there's no chance we're going to be able to walk to any of the nearby schools. We're going to lose that part of our lives, and it's going to end up costing us time and money. I know these are things that are hard to factor into a budget decision, but ultimately, this is something that's important to me and I think a lot of people that attend Nauman, and I just would like it to be part of the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 27.
Good evening. My name is Winona West. I have a first grader at Nauman Elementary. So I'm speaking today as a parent and community member, urging you to reconsider the possible closure of Nauman Elementary. I don't know if you saw, the TEAs 2023 A through F accountability came out today. Nauman received the highest possible B rating, eighty-nine out of a hundred, which, when I looked at all the elementary schools in Leander, it's in the top ten schools. And so I just... So it's top ten elementary schools in the entire district. It's not a struggling campus. Nauman has been the cornerstone of this community for over twenty-five years, serving students with academic excellence, emotional support, and a strong sense of belonging. Our school is the heart of our neighborhood. We walk here, we play here, we learn here. Closing it would break up more of the classrooms. It would break up our community. And I urge LISD to consider other ideas than just shutting down the schools. And if you're worried about the under... Oh, never mind. Let's invest in what's already working.
Thank you, Speaker 27. Speaker 28. Twenty-eight.
Hi, I'm Tina, and I'm from Nauman Elementary, and I have a second grader and a pre-K four currently. This is about when you're sitting in traffic and you see those cars that keep constantly switching lanes back and forth. Every time you see which lane is going faster, you switch just because that one looks like the shorter and faster lane. But those are the people who are actually causing more issues. And that's what LISD has been doing, going back and forth, and you're going to end up closing the schools down on the south, building more schools up in the north, and then they end up becoming the smaller schools, and then you can just going back and forth, making all these little clusters of schools. So just be patient and wait. We are all trying to get to the same place, to raise good, kind humans who get to reach their hopes and dreams. Nauman has that exact village, raising our kids together, where we know our neighbors and look out for each other. And maybe I have enough time to say, my son's letter was, "Ladies and gentlemen, I have announcement. Why should you close down Nauman when the teachers are working hard and kind? Everybody is really kind. The teachers are nice and also should be treated nicely."
Thank you, Speaker 28. Speaker 29.
Hi, my name is Caroline Cook. I am a mom to one student at Laura Welch Bush Elementary and one at Canyon Ridge Middle School. I again ask the board to please uphold your commitment to involve communities in discussions before taking action to repurpose or close schools. There are a lot of rumors going around and a lot of anxiety that there will be a sudden announcement of school closures, as other districts have recently done. Leander ISD can be different. We can find creative solutions. I'm not asking to keep empty schools open. Laura Welch Bush Elementary is far from empty, with five hundred and twelve students currently enrolled. This is much higher than what PASA has listed as the current enrollment. LWBE has a thriving and growing pre-K program, which is a great use of some extra space. I think we should also explore the small school model, which has been mentioned in prior board meetings. We want to work with the board and administration on smart solutions, and ask that you continue to let us be part of the process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Speaker number thirty. Speaker thirty-one. Thirty, sorry. I skipped the number thirty.
Hi, my name is Marina, and I am part of the community affectionately, or maybe not so much, known as the Steiner winers. I get it. It feels like we're up in arms at the mere whisper of a school closing, but that's because our neighborhood schools are at the heart of our community. My kids walk or bike to school each day, and on the walk home, more often than not, it turns into a playdate. Sometimes they bring a friend. Sometimes, more impressively, they manage to invite themselves over to a friend's house. That connection is something only our neighborhood schools can facilitate. That same proximity is what lets me, as a full-time working parent, be actively involved at school. I can get to Laura Bush in three minutes. Because of that, I'm able to be a room parent, volunteer to teach Spanish, serve weekly as a literacy partner, and make it back to my desk without anyone realizing I'm gone. I'm just one of many parents in our community that do the same because the setup makes it possible. Losing any neighborhood schools would hurt our kids, our communities, our beloved teachers and staff. And to what end? A one-time cash infusion with unknown costs. We know you're facing tough decisions, and we respect that. But let us be more than Steiner winers. Allow us to be part of the solution in finding a better, more innovative way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number thirty. Speaker thirty-one.
Hello, my name is Max Smith. I'm a thirty-one-year-old mechanical engineer who's been sending my autistic son to Nauman since February of 2023. We live right down the road, and my son and I walk to Nauman every morning. Or rather, I chase him as he rides his scooter as fast as he can. My son got to experience the ideal childhood learning environment, not at a far-flung center, but at the school he would eventually attend. He has gotten to know the teachers, the halls, the building, and the playground. Given his special needs, consistency is key with his development, and also the development of all children. With the benefit of that consistency, he is actually going to have a reduction in services as he enters kindergarten. What parents like me want for our kids is to keep that nurturing environment at Nauman alive, to keep the building on the improvements in our children, our school, and in our community.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-one. Speaker thirty-two.
First of all, thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service to the community. Your role is incredibly challenging and incredibly important, and I just want to know that you're seen and appreciated. Thank you in particular for allowing me the chance to speak today. I'm speaking today to express my support for keeping Nauman Elementary School open. My family moved from North Austin to Cedar Park in 2021, and school choice was a major selection in where we moved. We were drawn to the community surrounding Nauman Elementary for several reasons: the excellent student performance, the reputation for strong leadership, and the community neighborhood feel. This was particularly important for my family because both of my children were born during the COVID-19 pandemic. And it's been a challenge for us to develop social skills for our children while also adhering to social distancing measures when they were small. Nauman seems like the perfect place for them to thrive and develop their social skills and academic performance. Thank you again.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-three.
Thank you. She decided she wanted to speak, so.
Hello, my name is Eva Tyner, and Nauman has been a part of my life for three years, and I would really hate for you guys to shut it down. Nauman is a great place to learn, learn to be kind, and it is a very nice place. I love always driving there, and it's really nice because I've got to know the school, the playground, and a lot more things. I really love the teachers. They're very kind and helpful. They help us learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-three. Speaker thirty-four.
Tough follow. Hi, my name is Drew Shuts. I'm the proud father of Noah, a first grader at Nauman Elementary, and Riley, who's excited to be a Nauman Knight entering kindergarten next year. My wife Lauren is a former kindergarten teacher, currently teaching pre-K, and hopes to one day be back in a kinder classroom and dreams that that classroom will be at Nauman with her two kids. It's our neighborhood school. I'm here today with many fellow Nauman Elementary neighbors concerned about the impact the long-range plan will have to our neighborhood school. While we wait for considerations the committee will present to the board, we understand the possibility Nauman's name comes up again. I call upon the board to reaffirm its dedication to prioritizing keeping neighborhood schools open and reassuring its students and their families, educators, and administrators of this priority as it did in 2023 during the bond election and strong engagement between the ISD and its community. This prioritizes stability for our current and future students and current and future teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-four. Speaker thirty-five.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Clausen-Diver. I was born here in 1973. I've been in this community for over fifty years. I attended Fabian. I was in school in 1979 when Tom Glenn came to save our school district from being shut down by TEA and created the Leander Way. So I have lived it. This is hard. This is harder than I thought. I want to recognize the financial pressures that you're facing, declining enrollment, inflation, and the state legislation that rarely passes bills that increase our school funding. Districts across the state of Texas are all dealing with the same issues that we are. Northwood and Hills, Plano have successfully completed the transition of shutting down schools or repurposing schools. But the buildings we're discussing tonight are more than facilities. They are the heart of our community. These decisions are emotional and deserve careful, transparent planning, dissolving the long-range planning committee without public facing... Basically dissolved... Oh, my gosh, there's so much I can say. There's so many layers. I'll email you.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker thirty-five. Speaker thirty-six.
Hi, my name is Amy Yang. I'm a parent and special ed I.A. at Fabian. Four years ago, my daughter started at Fabian, and I never expected how much the school would mean to us. As someone who grew up outside of the U.S., Fabian was my first experience with an American elementary school, and from day one, I felt truly welcomed. Last year, I joined the staff, and it felt like coming full circle. Today, I work with people who aren't just educators. They are role models, motivators, and teammates. Fabian isn't just a school. It's a community, a second home. Fabian may be small, but its heart is huge. It uplifts families. It brings people together. It changes lives. So I'm asking, please keep Fabian open, so that the next family who walks through those doors, just like we once did, can find their way home here. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-six. Speaker thirty-seven.
Hi, I am Rachel Crawford, a Fabian parent and current PTA president. Fabian is more than a building. It's a connected and diverse neighborhood school with an active PTA and dedicated families who've stayed engaged through years of leadership changes, rezoning, and a plugging uncertainty about what will happen to our school. We understand that you guys face challenges, but the process around possible closures has lacked transparency. We were promised community input, yet decisions appear to be moving forward without it. Hearing that board decisions could happen and votes could happen as early as May 8th, while we continue to invest millions in new neighborhood schools, raises very real concerns about equity and long-term planning. Instead of closing schools, we urge you to explore our petition's vision: Small schools of innovation. These are campuses rooted in project-based learning, teacher leadership, student voice, and community partnerships, all aligned with LISD's own values. Fabian families show up. We've proven our commitment time and time again. So we're willing to work to build something bold for the future without dismantling what already works. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-seven. Speaker number thirty-eight.
Good evening. My name is Julie Justel, and I'm a second grade teacher at Westside Elementary. But more importantly, I am the proud parent of a Nauman Knight. Three years ago, my son Brooks started as a kindergartner in Mrs. Welch's class. I was home that year with a new baby, Brooks's little brother Ben. When I went back to the classroom the following year, I asked Brooks if he wanted to come to mommy's school, and without hesitation, he responded, "No, I love my school." That was all I needed to hear. There hasn't been a day since then that Brooks has stopped loving Nauman. When I asked him why he loves his school so much, this is what he told me. "The teachers are very nice. They help me a lot. They don't just give me the answers. They give me new strategies. My teachers help me grow. You can make friends very easily because Nauman is a very friendly place. I love it because everybody knows who I am." Nauman Elementary is the heart of our community. The dedicated staff has been welcoming in our neighborhood's children and making them feel seen and valued for twenty-five years. As an LISD teacher and parent, I implore you to allow Nauman to keep its doors open. Nauman Knights have heart. Here's to the next twenty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-eight. Speaker thirty-nine.
Hi, I'm the proud father of a fourth grader, a first grader, and soon to be a preschooler at Laura Bush Elementary in Steiner Ranch. We just relocated back home to Texas from California, and whenever you're making a big relocation from out of state, you don't have a lot of tools to go off of about where you want to go. But like most of these parents here, we'll do anything for our kids, so we use the tools that we had at our disposal: online rating systems, grade schools, NISH. Those pointed us to Laura Bush Elementary in Steiner Ranch. We found there a community that's so special that even Bruce Gearing, whenever we had the celebration for the Viper, or Vandegrift Vipers, for winning the Texas State 6A Football Championship at the Town Square, said it was the Vandegrift feeder pattern and that community that put Vandegrift on the map and made that community special. It's right in the heart of our neighborhood. Don't rip the heart out of our neighborhood. We talk about neighborhood schools a lot in these board meetings, and we talk about being innovative. I challenge you all to do that. Keep this neighborhood school alive. Be innovative with your solutions.
Thank you, Speaker thirty-nine. Do not show Speaker forty checked in, so I'm going to move to forty-one.
Good evening. My name is Sean. I'm a proud father from Steiner Ranch community. I'm here to speak against shutting down Laura Bush Elementary School. You know, I've been here, I've been in similar meetings, you know, speaking against this. This is my third time, and I'm willing to, you know, be here a hundred times, two hundred times, whatever it takes, just to express ourselves. That's how firm our stance is. I saw many neighbors in this crowd, you know, where they all came from the same reason. Laura Bush has been here, been around for over twenty years, and it's part of the community. It's top-rated school in Texas. You know, in the previous gatherings, it has been pointed out repeatedly, our community is growing rather than shrinking, as, you know, as one of the premises for shutting this school down. But that's not true. It's been, you know, the data is flawed. The process is flawed. So, yeah, I encourage, you know, I ask for reconsideration for this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-one. Speaker forty-two. Forty-two.
Good evening. I am Lorena, a charity at the museum. I'm here on behalf of my twin daughters that are first graders at Fabian Elementary. I want to share with you what Fabian is. So I asked my girls yesterday what they liked most about Fabian, and I got a resounding, because the teachers are very nice moms. So yes, kind was a tough transition for me, really, but how our first grade has been an amazing experience. an amazing experience, one where my girls love going to school and talk about all of their teachers, counselors, Principal Cordell, and Vice Principal Sanderson in such a positive light. It's not any one of them specifically, but the collective group of unity, joy, and love for what they do that is distinctly special. This little school with a big heart is the hidden gem of the community. Fabian provides for the unique needs of the surrounding neighborhoods. We know that not all children thrive on a large campus, so the school may not be near and shiny, but it's what's inside that counts the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-two. Speaker forty-three. Forty-three.
Hi, I'm Cara. I have two kids at Laura Welsh-Bush. We have loved it there. As everyone is saying, these community schools really are the heart of the communities' neighborhood schools. Back in 2023, there was a proposal to close down a couple of schools to completely repurpose them. The community came out and chose. You all heard a lot of feedback, and, you know, as actually a year ago, April sixth board meeting, Bruce Gearing said, "We have listened to the community, and we understand that there is a strong desire to keep neighborhood schools open. We believe that there are ways to repurpose campuses that keep schools open while also addressing district needs and also bringing some exciting, engaging new opportunities to neighborhood schools." So I'm just circling back here. Two years ago, Bruce Gearing had said to all of us that there are other ways, and the Long Range Planning Committee brought a lot of really creative, innovative proposals that I would love for us to relook at and to consider. Really urge you to just keep our neighborhood schools open and to look at other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-three. Speaker forty-four.
Hi, I'm Jenny Middleton. Those were my three boys up here. The two of them were very sad. I didn't know I had to sign them up separately. The kindergartner wants you to know that Nauman is the best place ever. The second grader wants you to know that he has made the best friends there. He'd hate to be moved to somewhere else. As a mom, I love Nauman. It's not easy making friends as a grown-up. I don't like to do it, but that school has given me some really great friends in this stage of my life, and I'm really grateful for that community. And one of my friends shared this with me, and I just think it's lovely, so I'm going to share it with y'all. Nauman has life, soul, and love, from the little children that attend there to the amazing teachers. Our children are seen and listened to by every single staff member. We have found a community that's embracing of growth and learning. We're glad that Nauman stands strong in our little neighborhood, and it nurtures our children. Nauman is the stronghold for the kids in our neighborhood and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number forty-five.
Hi, I'm Nancy Vance. My son Noah goes to Fabian, and I volunteer there as much as they let me. I want to talk about the deficit that is not money. Our little school, Big Heart, takes your graduate profile seriously. I emailed you pictures of all of the different projects our school does that contributes to the community. All we care about is teaching our kids kindness and caring and giving back, and our whole school, from the PTA to the teachers to the admin, to our quest, everyone, that's all they do. They work together. So the deficit isn't the money. It's what happens when you close down a little school that teaches all of this, and then no one's giving back anymore. So you need to do something to change it because our little school does all of it. And I've shown you all of it, and they continue it every single week of every day. We follow all of your guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-five. Speaker forty-six.
Good evening. My name is Neshan Barbario, and I'm a parent and a proud member of the Treviso community. I hear and respect the concerns raised today, especially as a former Steiner Ranch resident. I moved to Treviso to raise my family, and like many others, I was drawn here by the growing number of young families. The northern part of our district is rapidly expanding, and the data shows that C.C. Mason will soon be overcrowded, especially with the continued development. This isn't just a challenge. It's unsustainable. The board has explored many options like rezoning and busing students to balance enrollment in southern parts of our district, but those approaches aren't practical, and more importantly, they go against LISD's mission of keeping schools connected to neighborhoods. Splitting Treviso families across multiple campuses weakens the sense of community. Voters already approved the bond to build School Site Thirty-two. Our community said yes to growth, yes to planning ahead, and yes to keeping our schools close to home. That commitment deserves to be honored. This isn't just turning our backs on, this isn't just turning our backs on the past. It's about preparing for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-six. Speaker forty-seven.
Kind of short. Good evening. My name is Dr. Sartaj Siddiqui. I am a neonatologist, a pediatrician, and most importantly, a mom of two little boys. You've heard my husband speak in the past, you've seen my little boys, and tonight, it's my turn. I must address the false narrative circulating that building new schools in northern Leander ISD comes at the expense of schools elsewhere. This simply isn't true. Our district growth isn't uniform. We're expanding rapidly in the north while seeing declining enrollment in southern areas. Some Steiner Ranch advocates have spread fear by telling families at other schools they'll close if Treviso moves forward. This is misleading. Building new schools where growth demands and addressing under-enrollment are separate issues requiring different solutions. True fiscal responsibility means making difficult decisions. Even Eames ISD, one of the wealthiest districts in Texas, closed an elementary school when necessary. We can't claim to be fiscally responsible while maintaining severely under-enrolled schools. The need for Treviso remains critical for northern families and will not come at the expense of other schools. These decisions should be based on data and demographic trends, not fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-seven. Speaker forty-eight.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Mohammed Youssef, and I'm a parent, taxpayer, and a community member, and most importantly, a father of four beautiful kids, all under the age of ten, so they're all elementary-going. I want to start by acknowledging the emotions tonight, neighborhood schools carrying meaning, memories, and deep community roots. I hear the pain in people's voice, and I don't think that anyone takes that lightly. But I also believe that it's our way to our kids to face the reality in front of us. Right now, the schools in the northern part of our districts are bursting at the seams. Meanwhile, other campuses are operating less than half-capacity. This isn't just inconvenient, it's unsustainable. Some areas simply aren't regenerating younger families. That's not a judgment, it's just demographic reality. And trying to maintain half-full campuses while faster-growing neighborhoods are overcrowded, all while the state continues to underfund public education. I urge you to look over this again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Speaker forty-eight. Speaker forty-nine.
All right, hello. I'm here for Nauman Elementary. I'm here to speak for my family and three other families that live right around us. This includes a third grader, two second graders, a first grader, a new student that just moved and will be starting second grade in the fall specifically for Nauman, and two future Nauman Knights that are enjoying toddlerhood. Nauman may be a small school, but it builds long-lasting friendships like ours. Our teachers know our name, and they know our stories. This kind of care can't be replicated at bigger schools, and it's the reason that we made sure to move near Nauman. I speak from experience when I say this, that this leads to personalized learning in many ways, specifically with my kid, when he, when we moved here, he entered first grade. He entered with a pre-K reading level, and by the end of the year, he was reading chapter books. He would have gotten lost in a bigger crowd. You see, data does show that a 250-student population is ideal and can be run efficiently through position consolidation, teacher autonomy, and targeted use of technology. We will not accept disclosure. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker forty-nine. Speaker fifty is not checked in, so I'm going to move to Speaker fifty-one.
In a video before the bond vote, Dr. Gearing stated that the neighborhood schools mattered, that we didn't need to close entire campuses, and that the bond would allow for continued community input. In reality, the district does whatever it wants. The Long Range Committee proposed combining Leo and New Hope in separate wings of a campus to save on costs. That was ignored. Repurposing facilities into early childhood centers was also rejected in favor of a predetermined brand-new facility. The committee and PASA experts suggested delaying Elementary Thirty-two due to declining enrollment, housing shifts, and resulting under-enrollment in multiple campuses, but we are building it anyway. And when innovative ideas were presented to keep southern schools open, the committee was disbanded. I'm speaking up because we deserve honesty and genuine engagement, not just PR exercises for the sake of optics. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker fifty-one. Speaker fifty-two.
Hi, I'm Celeste Fornert. I'm a parent who's poured a lot of heart into this district over the last few years. After all of these impassioned speakers, you've heard the fears, the frustrations, and the heartbreak, and I get it. This is hard. Walking to school sounds like a dream. But here's the truth. Some schools are half-empty. Others are well over capacity. The data doesn't lie. Some areas are aging out. Others are exploding with growth. Pretending otherwise does not serve our kids or taxpayers. Texas has put ISDs into a budget crisis. We need to close or repurpose schools that are half-full. We need to build schools where students are, not where they used to be, and we need to do it now before overcrowding and underfunding puts us even further behind. This isn't about choosing winners and losers. It's about being responsible, future-focused, and honest. Do not let fear or a mob guide your decisions. Let data, equity, and courage lead the way. Our kids deserve nothing less.
Please be silent.
I urge you to be brave, like the leaders we need. Disrespectful.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to our last speaker. And just a reminder, when other people are speaking, please refrain from comments because then we have to start the whole process over and give everybody their fair sixty seconds. But that was our final speaker, so citizen comments are now concluded. Next, we're going to move to our next item on the agenda, and that is our consent agenda. Board members, do you have any motions related to consent agenda items?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I second. Anna makes a motion. Shadé seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor. Consent agenda passes. Since we have a guest with us this evening, we're going to change the order of our agenda, and we're going to start with item six B two, consider approval of internal audit plan for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do we have a guest? Yes, okay.
He's coming. He's coming. Madam President, Members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Grisham, we are here this evening to bring you the recommendation from the Internal Audit Committee to give you a brief update. We do have a special guest here. We have Kent Ingram with Gibson Consulting. Just want to give you just a few highlights of what we've got candid here if there are any specific questions on the recommendation from the Internal Audit Committee or to provide any other guidance or questions as needed. As you recall, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, our regular meeting, we had, we received the internal audit and inherent risk assessment, and at that time, the board decided for Gibson Consulting to do the internal audit for the last twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five current year to the academic program management and the federal program areas. Those audit reports are in draft form and have been reviewed by the Internal Audit Committee, and the final reports are expected in the next thirty to forty-five days. When we did meet last, we discussed what the process or what the programs of audit would be for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and it was decided on three areas, and one is a little unique, so I want to just briefly touch base with them. But the first one was the human resources, and the second was procurement. Those would come out of the general fund as normally budgeted, a budget process. The other one that we wanted to look at was construction management, and so those three would have been above what we have typically set aside or earmarked in the budget for internal audit. However, in talking with Gibson Consulting and then reaching out to Kristin Savant with our bond counsel, there are many instances in other districts across the state of Texas that have used, since all their construction is with bond funds, is that they use the bond funds to pay for the internal audit function of the construction management to help ensure that the bond funds are spent appropriately and inefficiently. And so with that, this is not gone. It has yet to go to the bond oversight committee. So we have recommended tonight that we, the board, accept the recommendation for the human resources and procurement, internal audit functions, and the construction management pending approval by the bond oversight committee, which they plan to meet in approximately the next month or so. But again, that's kind of where we're at, what our recommendation is for the upcoming year, and thank the members of the Internal Audit Committee for all their hard work. Kent is here for any questions that I'm not able to answer, but we will definitely, looking forward to hearing from you or any questions or if you're good to go.
So I had a question. I guess this is more for the committee. So when I'm looking at the risk assessment results and I look at what it was rated, I'm wondering, why did we pick procurement with it being one of the lowest ones when I see some of these, like? So can we please explain why?
So procurement is, there is, right now, there is really no, there's nobody in that position right now, and this is an opportunity to really shape the work that will, that should go into procurement when, or actually, I wouldn't say, if there's somebody that is hired into that position, or as it goes, filled with, I think, someone from, Pete has someone kind of temporarily in that position. And so there's just been opportunities that have been recognized in the past. And yes, it's the lowest, but we're also looking for, just the same way we picked federal programs last time, looking for another program that is, that doesn't request that much heavy lifting, but is, but is really touched on quite a bit throughout the district. Do you have anything else to add, Pete?
Yeah, because I want to hear from you, because we have nobody in that position right now.
No, that's Pete.
No, ma'am. That position's been vacant since July, that we've gone through the interview process. Right at the end of that interview process is when we froze all positions back in like January, February. Those positions have just been released. We're in the process of finalizing that this time. So it was my request, I mean, it was my request to the Internal Audit Committee to go ahead and do the procurement piece. That way that when a person does come in, we're able to really start off on the right foot and to make sure, because I know there's, we have some, there's some issues there, so I wanted to just make sure that this person is, has the best chance of being successful going forward. So if you look at the, you know, as you look at the assessment risk, you know, construction management was the highest, and that was not done this last year, but we are doing it or recommending it to be done next year. Unfortunately, we were able to, you know, to find a way to pay that with bond funds. So at the end, basically, you take, you know, construction management was first, human resources was second, and that's what we're doing, recommending for the next time. Academic program was third. We did that this year. Special education was fourth, but we had just done an audit in the last three years on special education, so we felt that that was best, that we could push that off one more year. Facilities, transportation, financial management, safety and security, those are constantly being reviewed just with the state, with the grants. Federal programs we just did are, we're recommending for next, this next fiscal year, and then procurement. So we get to the point where you start looking at, what are these costs for each one for estimated cost, and which ones can you add up to get to what your budget is for that year? And so that was also a factor as well. So between those two things, between the budget constraints as well as the debt position and some areas that we wanted to make sure that we could get rectified and really start off on the right foot, those are the, those are the comments that I made to the Internal Audit Committee, and I'm sure that was some of their reason, not all, of why they made the recommendation that we're talking about this evening.
Yeah, I'll add. We were looking at ones that were high lifts and ones that weren't, but also that had a high need, but the lift wasn't the same, because we needed to balance those two pieces. And so Pete helped us kind of talk that through, and we looked at different scenarios and different options that would kind of fit that mold of what we were able to do, and that was the decision we came to.
I think just, I'm trying, I guess this would be the time to talk about it, because there's three people on that committee, right? And I can't, I guess I'm just wondering, going forward next time, I'm just curious, how are these ranked? Is it, you know, what's the priority? Because I'm looking at some of these, right? Like procurement's seventy-six, and I'm a little, I'm a little uneasy knowing that we don't have someone in that position right now, and we're, and I get, I get your reasoning. I do, Pete, I do.
You're uneasy?
I know, but I, I know, and I understand why, you know, fresh slate, whatnot.
Yeah.
I guess it's just for me, I'm thinking, I look at safety and secure. I just look at some of these other things, and I, I'm just trying I just look at some of these other things, and I, I'm just trying to understand what's, you know, why one made it to the top, you know? And that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand because I know each of us have certain, feel passionate about certain things. Like I'm excited that we're finally doing construction management. Like I wanted that to be last year. But like, you know, for me, I'm thinking the topic in the room, facilities, right now.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm just trying to understand, that's it.
No, those are good points. As we made, as we had the discussion, it's just, it was a matter of how do you balance the budget and, you know, some of the areas, safety and security? Well, right now, we are getting a ton of, not a ton, we're getting a significant amount of money from TA, from grants, to do safety and security. We're not getting a ton of money in the MNO budget to cover the requirements that they're putting on us to provide safety and security for our campuses. But those things, since we are in the middle of that and we're in the process of getting those, and those are audited or walk-through audits every year, we felt that that was one of the reasons why that. Let's get some of this completed before we really look into it from an internal audit perspective. It was discussed, I mean, it was taken into consideration.
I'm, I'm trying to balance, I mean, it just, we're doing an audit on P-cards, and it just feels like we're, there's always P-cards in the background. And I, I understand wanting to have a clean system, and that is good, and there's a reason, but when I think of all the things that we're balancing right now, it just seems, I just, I'm questioning really P-cards? Is that really so fundamental to our system right now? And it, and I'm curious, just kind, help me kind of think that through a little bit. Just because it seems like we did P-cards not that long ago.
Well, we're auditing the procurement. P-card is a small piece of procurement. It's just a tool in that toolbox of how to, how to purchase items for districts and stay within compliance. And I'll let Kent add on if I, if I don't leave the answer as solid as it maybe could be. But procurement is very broad. I've been in this business 24 years, and a lot of times, it's the one thing that puts you on the front page of the newspaper is when some procurement goes wrong, or like you said, someone buys something on a procurement car that is way out of base, or a district is in non-compliance. And those laws, procurement piece, the district our size, I mean, $50,000 is the threshold. You have to be on a purchasing co-op, or you have to bid it out or have an RFP. Forty-eight campuses, that's $1,100 a campus they spend cumulative. You can hit that fairly quick. So in a district our size, we can be out of compliance before we even know it. We can be out of compliance probably by the time August is over just with campuses bringing in speakers. And if they all bring in one speaker, and it's the same speaker, the same company, it's $1,000 each, and 48 were to do it for back-to-school, you're already at $50,000. And so it's just one of those things that we felt, we have some, you know, we have grown very fast, and we're still very paper-heavy, a lot of areas, purchasing being one of them. So when all that into consideration, we just really looked at it as more of an internal audit control to make compliance. And again, P-card is a piece of that, but it's a much broader picture as well as just making sure that, you know, procurement is the one area where you're directly controlling or managing the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. So we want to make sure that our top priority is to make sure that we are always in compliance and that we can, you know, look at our community and our taxpayers and say, hey, we are in compliance, and we're spending the money as wisely as possible. So that was the main reason of why I wanted to make that recommendation to the audit committee.
No, that, that helps me kind of process. And I'm hoping the committee and your, I heard you even mention in the opening, that we look at previous audits that we did and make sure that we're using the limited resources wisely that we have. And I feel like when you're doing audit, there's so many areas that all need attention. And I definitely don't want us to only hit on one area a bunch of times and not other. So I just, I hope the committee stays aware of that and balances. I have one other question, and it's really not a question, it's a request, which is that I, I'm kind of pondering, I have some discomfort with us using bond funds for part of this. I understand why, but you've heard me say it up here, and I will keep saying it, that I am getting more and more uncomfortable with moving forward on spending bond dollars until we get it, kind of look at it and pull it all together, especially with the changes and the discussions to legislative session. So my request is, when this moves forward, I'm hoping that there will be a robust discussion amongst the committee, you know, that y'all's processes, that y'all include that part in there so that we can ask them questions and understand their process and their thought process, and that they have the opportunity to look at the big picture before they make a recommendation.
Will do.
Is there anything else, Kent? Is there anything else you wanted to add about the scope of each of these audit areas?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure too that we're aware that risk assessment is from, I think it was two years ago, two years ago. And so that's why the ranking is maybe not completely reflective of where we are today because we haven't done a, we don't do a full, one of these big risk assessments every year. I will speak to procurement a little bit. One of the factors, as your internal audit provider, that prompted recommending this too was hearing some things through our other projects that we're doing right now. A similar thing happened with picking another project for this current year. And so we always bring those to the attention and say, I know it's maybe not the top five, but there are some things that need to be looked into. And so that with an opportunity to kind of shape departmental functions and processes for a new leader, really made it the right time to do it. And I completely understand the desire to have a good, robust discussion on the appropriate use of bond funds, completely get that. We have gone down this path with some other clients, and you do have a lot of value, particularly where you are in the bond cycle, of having someone come in to look at processes, controls, make sure that work is going to be delivered on time and at quality that we expect. All that to say, it is an investment, and bond dollars are special and specially protected. So I completely understand that desire.
So basically with construction, the timing is very important because of where we are in the construction cycle and the use of the bond funds.
Yeah, we're just finishing the, basically, the first year of the first bond sale. We're going out to bond sale in May for the second part of it. So we're just, this is an opportunity to, you know, hey, you've done it for a year. Even though we have bonds before, we have done it for a year. Anything that we can do to improve, I'm going to carry that forward as we go through the next process, particularly when we start doing some of the, the two elementaries that are coming, the ECC, if we build one of, that build that. Those big projects, hey, there's an opportunity for us to do something a little bit better. We can implement that now instead of doing it at the end of the bond term. And since all the construction is with bond dollars, that was one of the things that, why the bond counsel has allowed is to use bond funds for that internal audit, that function.
I move the board to approve the internal audit committee's 2025-2026 school year plan for Gibson Consulting to conduct internal audits and program management services for the human resource and procurement departments and associate program and costs using the general fund and using bond funds for the internal audit of construction management pending approval by the bond advisory committee and program management costs as presented.
I second. Anna makes motion, Shadé seconds. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We're going to take a 10-minute break, and so we will come back at 8 o'clock.
All right, we are back from our break and we're going to move over to item 6A1, which is Discussion of Math Pathways.
Good evening, Madam President, Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to share an important update with you regarding our district's math pathways implementation. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to update you on where we are with math pathways and how we're continuing to support our students and our teachers. So at the heart of this work is ensuring access to rigorous, appropriate-level math instruction for every student. Our system offers students multiple pathways, starting in grade 5, that meet them where they are and support them and their progress through increasingly advanced coursework. So instructional pathways are intentional strategies used to engage learners and support success. It expands access, deepening learning, to ensure that every student has a pathway to mastery.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. As you know, over the last few years, we have made some fairly major adjustments and there have been some legislation around advanced math pathways for students. And so we just want to update you on some of these items. There is a lot of information in some of these slides. Some of these I'm going to go through pretty quickly because it is just background information that we've presented before, but I'm going to highlight a few things as we go to kind of let you know where we are now. So this document kind of shows you, these are three different pathways in mathematics, which was really the whole point of what we wanted to create, options for students to move in and out of. And you can see that each of our courses on Pathway 2 and Pathway 3 in those lower grades cover roughly half of the next year's TEES. So they're compacted, not fully, but partially compacted all the way through. And that allows for students to reach a higher level of mathematics potentially, depending on which pathway they're on. So that's kind of an important thing to notice about that. This kind of really pretty CINGE graph that Emily Gray makes for us is really meant to demonstrate, these are Pathway 2 kids from last year, and it's really meant to demonstrate how kids move beyond where they are and move down, move up, depending upon what their desires are in mathematics. But most importantly, in our system, all but 179 seniors were in a math or math-aligned course. And we consider other AP courses like AP Physics and courses like that, Computer Science, while they might not technically be math courses to the state of Texas, they are math-aligned and we consider those with students because they might not want to take calculus, but if they want to take AP Physics, we're counting that in that term. So that just gives you an eye of how they can broaden their experiences by having access to all these different pathways. So this first one is our grade-level pathway. This is Pathway 1, and the titles are purposeful because it's all about students taking the math that they're ready for, not about being advanced in math. It's really about accelerating in math, which is about the math that you're ready to take. So students that are on Math Pathway 1 and are in 5th grade math, at the end of 5th grade, they are all considered to be a part of Pathway 2. So we take a collection of data, just like we do with our 4th graders that we'll talk about in a minute, entering 5th grade. We analyze all of that data, teachers look at that, and then recommendations are made for students placed into that pathway. So even for our students on Pathway 1, if they did not get into Pathway 2 entering the 5th grade, there are still opportunities all along the way for them to be considered to be into that Pathway 2, which is the next slide. And that is the more what we would maybe say traditional accelerated math pathway that we're very much familiar with and has been around for a long time, which is reaching Algebra 1 by the 8th grade. So this is the pathway that allows us to do that, and it allows us to do that through compacting in 5-6, 6-7, and 7-8, to allow for students to get all the way to that Algebra 1 in the 8th grade. This pathway identification happens in 4th grade, and so we're in that process right now. We're just wrapping it up, where we create spreadsheets for campuses of all of the kinds of data for students because we don't want any decision to be made based on one data point. And we also know that teachers have those relationships with kids to know that students whose data may not even reflect their desire or interest or abilities, they might still want to be in there, and so we want to give that options for that. Additionally, if parents have questions about their child's placement and really feel like their child might have been misplaced, that parent voice is incredibly important as well. So this is that traditional pathway where students are identified in 4th grade. And again, just back on that last slide, if a student isn't identified in 4th grade and they're in Pathway 1 in 5th grade, they still have opportunity to reach a different pathway, which is the big difference between this and our old system, where it was kind of like, if you got on that train, you were on that train, and it was really hard to get on it along the way. And so opening up that equity for our students was kind of our most important part of doing this. And just as a reminder, Senate Bill 2124 went into effect this year, and it requires a district to place students who are in the top two quintiles in the state into the advanced math pathway, starting in 6th grade. We apply that logic to our incoming 4th graders into 5th grade, because it would be ridiculous to not do that, because then you'd end up having a lot of students that automatically get placed that weren't in where we start our pathway, since we tend to start ours, or we start ours earlier than a lot of districts tend to do that. So just wanted to bring that back up. We did find this year, we caught most of the students with our own internal process. There were students that were placed in to Pathway 2 based on doing well on STAR. A lot of that has to do with students maybe not doing as well on 4th grade STAR, which has been a traditional place, but then they do better on 5th grade STAR. And so that caught some students that we may have missed in our own internal criteria for placements. But in general, we're running pretty closely to what the state is requesting of us to do. So just to kind of recap all of that, students have their data reviewed every year. If they're not on an accelerated pathway, they have that opportunity. And students stay on their pathway unless a need or desire arises to move to another pathway. So if a student is struggling, we work very hard with our campuses to do those trainings and the understandings with the teachers around the conversations that need to happen, around why that might be. Or if student comes in and says, "I really am not ready for this. I want to get out of this course," again, those conversations are critical because it's important for kids and families to understand the implications of making a decision to either go into or come out of a different pathway than they're already on. So our newest one for this year is Math Pathway 3, and we are just finishing up the registration for this pathway. This is one that we've talked about in the past, where it has always been an option for students to take a credit by examination, or examination for acceleration is the official term, to skip a grade. But it has always been something that's not necessarily known unless you know. And so if you're on a campus that have a lot of students doing it, and so the neighbor's kid's doing it, and I'm doing it, and so then that's how we learn how to go and sign up for the test and take the test. And that's not really equitable in our system, because I kind of have to know about it to do it. So this year, we have created a local benchmark placement test that will no longer use exam for acceleration for students to do this, but actually take a placement test that the window is opening up next week, or week after next for, and our campuses are getting all their kids and their tests next week, so that we're doing it internally as a placement test. And this test allows students who are currently in our already accelerated Math 5-6 course to skip what they would be taking in 6th grade. So they would skip that 6-7 course and go straight into 7-8 to then be in geometry in the 8th grade. And we are having an increase in numbers of students every year that are choosing this option, and every year we have a handful more of 8th grade students who are eligible to take that geometry. By doing it the way we've done it this year, we've kind of made that more transparent. Every 5th grade student who is in 5-6 was notified about the opportunity. They were also notified about the implications of taking advantage of the opportunity, because there are implications. You finish your math courses early and they get real hard real fast. And so you really have to know your math well to do that. And our placement test is now, rather than being aligned to what we had them do at the state level, which really wasn't aligned to our course, because it's a blended course of 6th and 7th grade skills, the test that we've designed is 6th and 7th grade TEES. It mirrors what students actually do in the course that they're in. Now, it's not easy. It's hard. I mean, it's all of those TEES. So a lot of students are signing up to take this exam. As of earlier today, we were at about 675 students, which is a lot more than we usually have taken. But again, we've been more transparent about the existence of it, and we have students from every single one of our 30 middle schools that are taking this test. And that has not ever been the case before. So clearly, being transparent and giving that opportunity, will most of these students pass this test and be placed into that course? I mean, we'll see how the data comes out, but you really do have to already know your Math 6 and 7 skills to be able to be placed into Math 7-8. And it's not even really a test to prepare for, because you're not studying to try to get ahead. You're saying, "I already have the skills, and so I'm ready to move on." So we are saying in our literature for this that it is recommended for students who are in the top 1 to 2 percentile. And that's who we feel like is probably most likely ready to be successful on this test, but we're not limiting it. If students were in that course and they want to skip a grade, even with exam for acceleration, when we use that, we can't say, "Oh, no, you're not allowed to try." So we'll see how our data comes out over the next month or so to see how many of our students, and then we want to do some comparison to MAP as well, to kind of see how did the students who, where were they kind of in their MAP scores, and how successful were they in advancing in the grade level? So we're excited about the opportunity, and kind of time will tell what's going on with that. So this just tells you how much a difference it has made by opening up the equity in our classrooms to more students having access to accelerated pathways, so Pathway 2. So this is Pathway 2 students. In 2324, remember that it was PACE, and now we have made this change of not having it have an advanced label, but just a "what you're ready for" label. So we have greatly increased the number of students that are participating in this coursework, and we have students that are ready to tackle that and to do that. And our students are doing well. They really are. We've had some movement between, but because of the flexibility in 5th grade to potentially move in and out, it's not the same as it would be if they were in a middle school course, kind of dropping down. We met with principals over the last several years about this whole process. It is a big undertaking for elementary campuses to create the scenarios for students to have access to these two different curriculums. There is a webinar that I did last November that is posted on our website, so that any parent can go on and basically get in. A lot of the slides I put in here tonight are from that webinar. And we have several campuses this year who have done some advanced math nights or math pathway nights. And we hope that that number just continues to increase, because it is a complex process and a complex system, and the better informed our community is, the better off we all are. We have done professional learning on our new curriculum, because we do have a brand-new curriculum, and that in turn has created professional learning opportunities for our grade 5 teachers, because the makeup of our grade 5 classes, when we're separating out those two curriculums, makes it very similar to what happens in 6th grade, when we have, when we had PACE, and then we had on-level 6th grade. So that now is happening at 5th grade, because we're giving those students the math that they need during their math time. And so it's creating a different makeup of students for both sets of teachers. And so we've done professional learning on that this year with 5th grade representatives throughout the district. And so our celebrations are that our demographics in our classes are starting to more closely match with our district demographics. So we're not as out of sync. It's just been one year, but we're seeing small increments of more participation from our ECODIS, our special education, as well as our Black and Hispanic students. So that's a huge celebration for us. We have, as you saw, increased participation. We've created this new math curriculum that has 5th grade TEES, but has the appropriately embedded 6th grade TEES, not as an add-on at the end, but layered within the units. What 6th grade TEES does it make sense to put with these others? I mentioned the multiple entry points, and then we have really articulated what it means to accelerate to geometry in the 8th grade and created that Pathway 3. The first challenge that I have up there is one that I just mentioned. Now that we have separated out those 5th grade students into 5th grade and then the 5-6, when you look at MAP scores or district assessment scores separately now, it appears as if the Math 5 students are much lower, in the same way of when we look at high school Algebra 1 scores. Since so many students take 8th grade algebra, our high school Algebra 1 scores appear much, much lower. And so we are addressing kind of those misconceptions to mean that our students are not doing as well as they used to do. No, in 5th grade, we really didn't separate those students out, so they were all grouped together. When you do go back and kind of try to separate them out, because some places are better at identifying those PACE kits back then, it's really not that much different. It's a lot harder to do that now, looking back. And so those are just conversations that we're having, so that we're making sure everyone has the same understanding of what that really means when you're looking at that data. It does make qualifying numbers on campuses a challenge in the master schedule. And we have given our principals the authority to figure out for their campus how that best works, and it all depends upon numbers. It's harder in smaller campuses, because they don't have as many FTEs, to move kids around, to flex kids as easily. It makes it a lot harder. Or if I'm on a campus where I have a lot that qualified and very few that don't, how do I manage that and still create that equitable situation for all students? That is a challenge that we faced this year, and we continue, and will continue to face it and work through and problem-solve with our leaders throughout our system to help address those issues. And then we also know that we want to continue to provide professional learning opportunities for teachers to support the increase in students. Because the other part of it is, while we also talked about the 5th grade teachers needing more support, Senate Bill 2124 and our system has opened up more students in those Pathway 2 classes. So my students may not be the same kind of student that I had before, when it was a little bit more restrictive, to what kind of student was getting into that course. And I might not use to be scaffolding as much as I need to scaffold, or dealing with some of the academic gaps that might be there for students. And so we're working with teachers to help ensure that they're equipped to help support the different students that might be in their classes now than before. And that's kind of an overview of what we're doing right now. We work with our campuses on their master schedule collaboration. We're right in the middle of Pathway 3 testing setup, so we'll be interested to see how that works out. And we are always, our math team has worked diligently this year to make major changes to our 5th grade and 5-6 curriculum to help support teachers in understanding and meeting the needs of those particular students. And then, again, we'll continue to work on most of our scheduling. We are using our district assessment and data to drive any curriculum adjustments we need to make. We want to collect data on the students who are moving between pathways, because we have a form that we're sending out to our campuses at middle school specifically, to say how many students moved out, what was the reason that they did, so that we can start collecting data over the next couple of years. So if we need to make adjustments to our entrance criteria, we want to do that based on data, and so we can have that data to do that. And then, again, we want to provide professional learning for teachers around kind of that mindset of having a student who might fit a different profile than what you've seen in the course before, that scaffolding, and then tying it really to those District Mathematics One pagers that we made, that have the less of and more of, and helping teachers move to that more of, given the students that they have in their classrooms. And that is it. What questions do you have?
So in the past, or when we've had PACE, starting in 1st grade, so kids would end up doing like the next grade up. These days, when we have, say, 1st graders, 2nd graders, the lower-level elementary classes, when they do their MAP, and it shows that they're ready to learn at the next level of TEES, how are they, how is that being addressed for them?
So a couple of different ways. I think from a mathematics perspective, it's natural to think that because I'm performing at that 98, 99 percentile, that automatically means that I'm ready for the next grade-level TEES. that automatically means that I'm ready for the next grade-level teaks. And that may be true, but it may also not be true. It may be that it's a depth issue and that we need to go deeper for those kids. And so, we did purchase, I think we purchased it last year and have started using it, what's called Concept Quest. It's actually from the Math Learning Center, which is what our Bridges curriculum is built on. And it is challenge problems that are grade-level specific, but they go very deep. And so, we have that built into our curriculum at the lower grades, kindergarten, at, at the lower grades. I'm trying to remember how far up Concept Quest goes. But we, we've created our own, I think, for the very lower grades. And then Concept Quest starts either in second or third grade and then allows for students to have those opportunities. We also work very closely with our Director of Advanced Academics. And so, when we have those students who are very clearly high academically, we work with campuses and with Shirley. And that's a very kind of individual, almost like personalized learning plan for a kid who has those exceptional needs. Because remember, the state of Texas doesn't allow us really to accelerate by grade level. You're supposed to accelerate for the whole grade. And often, students will qualify in a math, but then not qualify anywhere else. And so, then we work creatively with the campus to help keep that child at their grade level, but meet their needs. And that's usually on an individual basis.
What does it look like if they get in, like if they go into Pathway Two or Pathway Three and then, like you said, decide, "This is not for me"? What does that look like for them to go back out? And then, do they have an opportunity if they decide they want to try it again later? Is that something that they can do?
Absolutely. I think that it's easier now because the laws in academic, um, in Texas with academic, I can't think of the word, sorry. The order in which you take courses. You're now allowed to retake courses. And for a while in the state of Texas, the law was you couldn't, if you passed a course, if you made a grade, you had to move on to the next one. And now, you can retake courses. And that allows a lot more for these students who might get to pre-calculus. Maybe they struggle with a seventy. And they're thinking, "I'm not ready to go on to calculus yet." They actually have an opportunity to take it again for credit, which we didn't, the state didn't allow to do that before. And absolutely, any student, and that's kind of the point of the pathways, is to have this movement in and out. We all mature at different rates. I may not be ready right now. I may be ready later. I may be ready now. And then I have something happen in my life that makes me need to take a step back, but then I can be ready again later. And we absolutely want to accommodate that for students.
Yeah, uh, two things on top of mind. One, um, I'd love to learn a little bit about the development process for the placement exam and kind of what steps are being taken to ensure that it's a, you know, ensures kind of, uh, it's a predictor of success on Pathway Three. And then the second kind of thing that's top of mind for me is just, and it may just be confirmation, that the placement exam is assessing topics in which the students have not necessarily received instruction.
Correct. So, an exam for acceleration. So, let me address your second question first and then I'll go back to the sec. So, if you think about it, it is a placement exam, but it's given in the same vein of how we have a student who takes an exam for acceleration. And a student who takes that sort of exam by signing up for it is saying, "I already know this stuff." It's not that they've had previous instruction, because that's a whole different thing. If I've had previous instruction, I'm taking a credit by exam. And that would be like, "I'm coming from somewhere where I had this course, but it was called something else and the way I can prove it is to take this test." But for an exam for acceleration, I'm basically saying, "I already know the things that are there and so I'm taking the test to prove that." What we have done is posted for families the teaks that are in the Math Six, Seven course. And they were informed of that in their letter with the signup. This is, these are the teaks in the course. And we have built the test over the most important teaks that are in Math Six, Seven to ensure that preparation for algebra readiness. Because part of why we're doing this is that so students don't ultimately try to skip algebra to get in an advanced pathway, because algebra is a foundational course. And so, by using the teaks in that Math Six, Seven course, that are those kind of pre-algebra important skills and those are the ones that we're doing, it will hopefully ensure that. The test is a two-part test. The first part is going to be a multiple choice with some potential electronically scanned-in items like OnStar, like the tech-enhanced items. And then, students will need to maintain, make a certain score on that part, a seventy percent, to move on to part two. And then, part two is actually a written exam with, uh, I think it's six or seven questions. My team will probably be texting me right now. You are wrong, it's five. The number of que, uh, that are actually thinking thoughtful questions that we will grade. And then, we are going to calibrate as well before we announce any grading and any final decision so that we're ensuring that test is working for that. Because we didn't really have the opportunity to field test it, except we sort of do. We have some friends in Georgetown who have agreed to have, because they also do Math Five, Six, and they have agreed to have some Math Five, Six students take this test for us after they finish STAR. And so, we'll get those results back about the same time we start testing, but that will be another calibration. Because honestly, we're concerned about the same thing, right? With this test is written by humans. We're not pure sense, so we're not able to do the millions of, of iterations of how it will work. But we want to make sure that we're doing right by our students. The good news is, is we have data on the students every year who take the old test and are accelerating. So, we know how many and what percentage of our students traditionally do that. If we get a very different answer from that when we first are scoring, then that can allow us to calibrate to make sure we're really hitting the mark and making sure that the test is putting the students in the right course. Because it's not all about, the test isn't going to be easy. So, it's not all about just getting there. It's ensuring they have those prerequisite skills to be successful.
The second question you answered was a little bit about equity around preparation.
Yes.
And so, I guess, just as a follow-up, are students taking it on the same schedule? Or relatively close?
Yes, yes. We have, we have, we are giving a two-week window. We wanted it to be tighter, but at the end of the year, it's really hard to do that with class parties in elementary and all of the things. Ending STAR, all of the things, field trips, it's just hard. So, we had to give a window, especially because it's two parts. And we want to give time. So, we'll have two hours to take the first part. And, um, I think we're, we're still trying to decide between forty-five and sixty minutes for the second part. And so, we want campuses to be able to do that on two different days if they want to. We are making this test secure as if it were a STAR test. So, we are, there is going to be a test security agreement. We are, we just decided today, we're hand-delivering these tests to the campuses, the, the written part, so that we can maintain that security over time. And teachers, as well as students, will sign a confidentiality agreement when they take the test.
So, I had a question. These campus math nights, um, did they occur across the district or in just select campuses?
They, I, I don't know. I only know of some that occurred. I don't think they happened at all campuses. The only thing that happened for all campuses is the webinar. Some of our campuses did elect to hold some math nights this spring.
So, I think that is a concern of mine.
Yeah.
We know that this board has talked about consistency with each campuses. And I think going forward, we know the master schedule is an issue. And I think what concerns me is that we're giving each campus, here, you go do it. And then, you're going to have one campus doing this thing and you're going to have one campus doing this. Because I get it, each campus has their own community. Each principal knows their community. But when we're talking about a large program like this to roll out, right, to make sure it's sustainable throughout the system, we've got to have some consistency. And so, I, I can only speak for mine. Like, I know my feeder pattern did that math pathway, tons of questions. Questions that I didn't know as a board member and I found very helpful. But I'm thinking about those parents and these other feeders who did not have that same opportunity. And so, I'm just wondering, how are we going to fix that problem? Because if we have one sections of the district doing what we're saying here, but we've got other sections not following through, we're not giving those students the access and opportunities they need. So, going forward, I guess, I don't need an answer right now. This is, we know this is a system-wide issue. And so, I'm going to be, I want to ask, I want to, I'm going to be following through this. Because as a parent whose child was denied access through this pathway long before y'all were here, this is important. This really makes or breaks a student's academic future. And so, I just want to make sure every student in our district, regardless of their feeder pattern, regardless of their principal, is getting the same information.
The one thing I will say is part of our reason for coming out and, and identifying a Pathway Three is to steer families to make the right decision for them. And we've talked about pace. There was this phantom double pace and triple pace that people have talked about. So, we're trying to identify and streamline that so that we do have some parameters and some control. We want students to accelerate what's best for them, but do it in the right way and move into a class with instruction. Like she said, not skipping Algebra One to get ahead, to get to the next level class, to take AP by the time you're a freshman. Do it the right way so you've got a solid foundation moving forward.
And this doesn't address your question, which I know you're not expecting. But on one hand, I will say from the math nights that we have known that have happened and, and Tony Benazi, our secondary coordinator, has gone to both of those that we know about, we have collected FAQs and we are creating an FAQ. And our goal is to also then post that on our site so that everyone has at least that access as we work on, because we've had some of the same questions. As we work on moving forward, how do we ensure that all families have that same opportunity?
I would really appreciate that, just because, like I said, I attended it. I had questions I didn't know. And then, we'll catch up later to this. But I'm curious to see how y'all are modifying this for students with disabilities. I know that's a whole nother conversation. I'll get with y'all fine. But again, just making sure students have access to this opportunity.
Also thinking about, how can the board support you in this work? And so, we're seeing a lot of really positive things happening. We're seeing access. We're seeing kiddos get in there. And we've talked about this on the phone and I asked you a few questions. And so, now, here, after noodling a bit, is where I'm at currently, right now. And so, I'd like the board, or are you, to tell me if this is something you keep pursuing or if I should think of other things as I continue to noodle on this, which is I feel that as we come up with our budget discussions, questions I may be asking is, how are we going to do, or are we going to do early release positions for certified math teachers? Does that help in this endeavor with doing this master schedule? And so, I'm not really sure yet where that goes on in the noodling process. If you have anything to add, board or otherwise, if something's obvious, please do.
The one thing I will add for sure is especially in our middle schools, as we have more and more students who are in geometry. Right now, we know that that happens in certain places and some of our campuses have a certified geometry teacher on campus. If that program grows or as it continues to grow, it's not a right-now problem because they're right now just fifth graders. But over the next several years, we are going to need to have the ability for our campuses to have those geometry-certified teachers on their campus. Right now, they work creatively with a small number of students. If they're in proximity to a high school, they'll walk over to the high school to do that. But as we grow, we know we're, we are, along with our middle school principals, have that, that concern around how do we ensure that we're getting those high school certified teachers? Because you can teach one grade level above. So, our Algebra One teachers at middle school, it's, it's not as big of a problem because if they're certified to teach through eighth grade, they are also allowed to teach Algebra One. That does not hold true for geometry. So, it narrows the, the, the pool of people that are qualified to be able to teach that course. It's always going to be a struggle at elementary, dealing with the whole FTE issue of when I have a really tiny class and I have a big class and how am I managing that? That's always going to be a struggle. But I know that's a, a coming thing for our middle schools is how are we going to manage the, the necessary certifications?
Great questions. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we're going to move over to item six B1, which is our legislative committee update. And I believe Dr. Gearing is going to lead or start us off in this area. Hello, Dr. Gearing. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, President Delacchia, members of the board and Dr. Grissom. It's, uh, great to be here tonight. Thank you. I'm joining you from Palo Alto in California. And so, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the SCR team and to our IT team for making it possible for me to join you tonight. It seems just natural, but it really is quite a feat to be able to do something like this. So, thank you to them. Also, I'm grateful to you to allow me this time to spend with my Vista Ridge High School senior as he comes to make his decision for colleges as he goes forward. And especially, I want to thank Vista Ridge High School for giving him the preparation that has made, uh, given him some exceptional opportunities and making his difficult decision about where he's going to attend. So, thank you for all of that. I jump into our legislative update. I want to point out first that our legislative priorities in Leander ISD are special education, safety and security, private school vouchers, as well as public school funding. We're also watching bond elections and maintaining local control very carefully and all of the funding associated with all of these issues. I want to start by just talking a little bit about special education and the funding associated with that. We know that the legislature is considering reforms to the special education funding model, moving from the current system, which is based on instructional settings, to a system based on individual student needs, rather, which we support very strongly. This shift much better supports students requiring intensive services. Additionally, House Bill Two has proposed an extra $615 million for special education in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that was one of our big pushes in our legislative priorities. And so, we're very grateful to the legislature for recognizing the need for us to fund special education at higher levels as we go forward. Switching a little bit to school safety and security funding, we do have Senate Bill Two-Sixty with its companion bill in the House, which is House Bill One-Twenty-four, that have already passed out of those bodies. And those increased state funding for school safety by about $500 million for the upcoming BNM. And what that means for us is a significant change in funding around campus safety from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand per campus. And also, uh, per-student funding jumped from $10 per student to $28 per student. And so, again, we're grateful to the legislature for recognizing the funding gaps that we've had in these mandates that came out of House Bill Three from the last session. And while it still doesn't meet our need and we have made our legislators aware of that, we are very grateful for what they have done. And so, um, we continue to educate them and work with them on, on these issues. To address private school vouchers very quickly, the Texas House has advanced a $1 billion private school voucher program that comes out of House Bill Three with its companion in Senate Bill Two. And so, that, uh, looks like it is going to progress through the system. There are still some arguments about how that diverts funds from public schools, but we continue to work with, with our legislature. On public school funding in House Bill Two includes nearly $8 billion to boost per-student funding and raise educator salaries. We're grateful, again, to the legislature for the work that they're doing to get this over the finish line. There are still some lawmakers that argue that this does not fully restore previous funding levels, but we continue to work with them on those issues. We are concerned about bond elections and local control. There are some key provisions, for example, in House Bill Nineteen about mandatory November elections, as well as, uh, the caps that they're putting on debt service obligations that we're watching very closely and continue to work with our lawmakers on. Switching gears slightly, uh, House Bill Six deals with Chapter Thirty-seven of the Education Code and school discipline issues. There are some provisions in those policies that have some concern for us, especially as it regards, uh, virtual DAP programs and special education students in particular. And so, again, we continue to work with our legislatures on the, the, the finite, uh, the finer details of, of what comes out of those bills. I think Anna is going to address House Bill Eighteen-Thirteen here in a second about enhanced parental information in special education, as well as advocate training issues. And then, just a couple of small minor issues that we're still watching. There is a bill, um, in the Senate that would change the effective start date for schools in the fall, which would remove, uh, some District of Innovation flexibility that we use as a district. And so, we're watching that one very carefully. And then, also, House Bill Fifteen-Fourteen has some other limitations on what you can purchase using bond funds and the length of, uh, life of those issues as we come out. And then, lastly, we're still watching, uh, the teacher incentive allotment and, uh, how that might affect us as we go forward. So, that's just a very brief, quick summary of the things that I see moving. I want to thank our legislative committee for continuing their hard and diligent work week in, week out, uh, watching the legislative process. So, I'll turn this over, I think, to Trish to see if she has any further comments.
I do. I have some comments, but I really want to kick it off first with Anna to go ahead and talk about the special education work that's been going on. Because Anna has done so much for our kiddos in Texas and Leander ISD.
Oh, thank y'all. Y'all know me, I'm a loud lady. So, uh, House, so this is exciting. So, for the last three sessions, we've been working with Representative Bucy's office So for the last three sessions, we've been working with Representative Bucy's office with, uh, House Bill 1813. And what that is, is called the Advocates Bill. And what that does is ensure that districts have a smooth and clear art process, admission, review, or dismissal process, which a lot of our students with disabilities go through. But it's clear and more accessible to parents. I will say before, uh, 2018, in this district, that was going down a, you know, trying to find what an art process looked like in this district. There was really nothing out there, very basic journal information. And so what I was excited about this bill is because of the reorganization that we did with our special education department. Um, I actually got to talk about our COPIA report, um, committee where we redid our incomplete art process. And so I got to put our, you know, our models and what we've done here, cause y'all know I like to say actions speak louder than words, and really make an impact on 1813. And so what this does, like I said, is make the art process more accessible. It, um, enforces districts to give parents a clear opportunity of, hey, your evaluation starts here. This is what your end date is. This is what to expect. And also most importantly, it gives parents the tools they need to understand when you do need an advocate, that you have an actual advocate that is gonna steer you in the right direction. And so just like any other org, you know, profession, we have some bad actors. We do. And so what this does is really give parents the tools they need to be able to get up there and advocate for their students when they are trying to get services with an advocate who knows the law. Because the Texas special education law is a lot different than in Illinois, California, or New York. I can tell you that right now. And so it passed out a committee 14 to oh. And so that's a completely, you know, that's Democrats and Republicans voting for it. And the other awesome thing about this is parts of this bill ended up in House Bill Two in regards to parent advocates and then also parent training. And so what that does is give districts, um, opportunity to apply for grant to give parents a training for special education. Because it is a complete complicated process. And a lot of the times, it's incredibly hard for a parent who's just got a child diagnosed to understand, oh wait, now I have to go through the school system. And a lot of the times, it turns into an us versus them. And this bill is really trying to prevent that us versus them and give everyone a seat at the table. So I'm real excited because it's got actual support on the Senate side. And so who knows? We'll see what happens.
Just want to give you a huge shout out. This is something that Anna, uh, has been working really hard over, you know, this is the third session. And it shows that, I mean, it takes, it, it takes a lot. And you, it takes multiple sessions to get these over, over the line. And so thank you for doing that. Thank you to John Bucy. Uh, Representative Bucy for, for working with us and, and working with Anna to, to really, to get this. And, and hopefully this is the year it happens, but if it doesn't, you know, it's, it's, um, we're able to see every, every time, every time we go into a legislative session, it goes a little bit further. And, and so I think where it is right now shows success alone. And, uh, hopefully it gets where we need it to, but even if it doesn't, this is success because it's gotten further this year than last time. So thank you.
You're welcome. I'm, I'm just happy. Like I said, parts of this bill exists in House Bill Six and House Bill Two. And to be able to have that, I mean, right now, the environment at the Capitol is not very friendly. And so to be able to go in there and talk about our school and them not hate me is, like I said, special education affects everybody. And so I'm just, thank y'all to the legislative committee and for our administration who gave me the information I needed to really advocate for our students.
Um, and I would like to thank our legislative committee, um, who's committed to doing early morning Monday phone calls. Um, to, to, to work on all of these issues. And I think because of this legislative committee's commitment and the administration's commitment, our community is seeing a very invested and engaged, um, board members, trustees. Um, when you go look at Leander ISD's legislative priorities, if you just Google that, the community can see all the priorities, fact sheets, data, tons of information there that our community, uh, that our SCR, uh, school community relations has put up for our community to access. I, um, I did a two-minute update on things to think of as legislation's moving right now. One, there is a transitory nature to the bills as they move through session. As they move through the process, bill language can sometimes look like something positive for students in public education and you're very excited. And then all of a sudden it gets amended or it can come out as a committee as a substituted and the bill looks much different than what you thought. Bills can also change from having a stick punitive damages to make you stop doing what they want you to stop doing, or carrot language where they incentivize you to do something. Um, this is a great example, as you've heard about it, talk about HB Two. Um, it's, uh, known as the funding bill where schools will get additional funding. But now there's a part in there where hold harmless language looks like it's going to cost our district $12 million. That's an impact negative. Um, the other thing is bills are more than their headlines. So in other words, you might see a bill and it looks great. You look at the language and all of a sudden, not what you thought it was. Bills that are on the surface could be doing something that's expected or clarifying. There's one bill out there that says you shouldn't use public funds to electioneering. I can totally agree with that. I think we can get behind that. When you read the bill though, the bill language says, chief administrators of a campus will be subject to a Class B misdemeanor if they allow a political sign to remain at the polling campus. That means at your campus where the vote was just happening after Election Day. So that's putting that on the principal's plate. Um, and then my third point is that bills by themselves may not be clear until you start actually pulling or not as clear as you think it is, until you put the chain of bills together. Um, Dr. Gearing discussed all the funding mechanisms, um, some of those pieces moving. But, um, as I mentioned, in that one bill, you look at hold harmless and there was a, a negative cost. So you have to put all the bills together to kind of see. And I think we're, um, Anna wants me to have Pete come up, but I will say, one example, and I'll, I'll tee it off and Pete can decide to take it or not, is bond bills that are moving. Because you'll have some with ballot language. It says the bond has to have this on the ballot language. But then you look at this one that says, oh, this is when you have to have the bond. And then here's another one that says, oh, and this is how you can pay down debt and it restricts how you're gonna pay down debt. And so you put all of this together and what you see is legislation that could severely restrict the mechanisms that Leander ISD used to help save our taxpayers millions, millions upon millions of dollars and get out of cap debt. And so I will say, when you think of these things as legislation's moving right now, please stay alert. It's not over yet. June 2nd is signee die. Uh, that means the last, last day of legislative session. And a lot can change between now and then. So that's my comments. And, um, Anna really wanted to make sure, uh, that you were able to come up here and offer some clarifying station, um, statements on bonds. If you could just break down some of that bond stuff in typical, I'm a parent in Leander ISD. I think we talk about bonds in a different way. And everything that you were saying, a lot of that was like, oh God, that's so scary. We're never gonna, you know, uh, it, it has impacts. So Pete, if you could break down that language, if you were talking to your neighbor next door that doesn't talk school board INS and MNO and bond language for fun every Thursday night.
Not more than happy to. Most of my comments are probably geared more to House Bill 19, uh, but that's one of the main bills that's being discussed, uh, for the tax rate. So basically, you know, a lot of things that, that, especially House Bill 19, it talks about, uh, you know, the tax rate notice. And so a lot of the things that are on that tax, that are asking for are actually already on the tax rate notice. We already tell them what our estimated fund balance is for debt service. We also put on there what our estimated fund balance is for, for general fund. We put on what that tax rate, what's that rec increase is based on last year's average home value that we get from the CAD. It's not a number the district comes up with. So a lot of the clarifications they're asking are actually already, already currently required on, to be on the notice. Um, one of the things is the election, uh, timing for bond and tax increases. So, uh, they were wanting to get all bond elections on the November Uniform Election Date. Pros and cons to that, uh, my, 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 I'm happy to take my personal opinion on that. I think bonds, city councils, school boards should be nonpartisan elections and they should not be on, associated with the November election date. This is my two cents, but they did not ask my, for my two cents. But I will, uh, keep, you know, striving for that because, you know, I don't know what it's, I've only voted once here, but when I was in Harris County, when I voted, there were 62 items on the ballot. And I consider myself someone who's fairly, you know, pays attention and by the time I got to number 35, and I can't remember who, what county judge was which or who, and I mean, it was, it was a lot. So it's almost like you're defeating the purpose because you just vote, you just wear them out. And I guess it's maybe that's what some of them tend to, but. Uh, one of the, you know, debt limitation is caps local government debt service payments to 20% of the average tax collections over three years. Sounds great, right? In theory. Hey, 20%? Well, right now, our tax rate's 30%. So we're already above the 20%. Now the committee substitute says, hey, any bond going forward after September 1st. But what does the state do every two years? They buy down the MNO rate. So yeah, 20%, no problem, right? Start in September. Two more sessions down the road, that tax rate goes 77 cents, 70 cents, 65 cents. Well, then you're over your 20% already because they're shrinking the MNO. They're, they're decreasing the denominator. So again, you talk about chain, you know, that's exactly, it may not be chained in, in one legislative session. This is a chain of events. They know, hey, each year, each time we reduce the MNO debt or MNO tax rate, then your INS rate, even if you stay the same, is gonna be a higher percent of the total. So that's gonna get districts, you know, one of those things that may look at and go, oh, hey, no big deal. We're okay. But two, two more sessions, then you find yourself, you're painted in a corner. Then you're not able to provide the needs for your students, uh, and that nature. Allocation of bond proceeds, you know, basically requires, say what you stayed on the bond on your election ballot is what you spend your bonds on. That is pretty much actually now. I mean, if there's any change, you have to go to the board and get approval. So that really doesn't change. Uh, they put some restrictions on anticipation notes. I've never done an anticipation note, but basically you're just taking out a loan and, and you'll pay it back based on the anticipation of the taxes you're gonna collect next year. So a lot of districts sometimes will do that. Uh, they fail a bond election. And so they're trying to reduce that. There was some committee substitute language that does lessen that, gives the districts a little more flexibility, but I won't spend a lot of time on that part. They did some certificates of obligation reforms, quite a bit of, I'll just mention these real quick because it does change quite a bit. Limits to use of certification obligation to specific urgent needs like compliance laws, public health emergencies. Reduces the maximum maturity rate period for certificates from 40 to 30 years. I mean, I've never done a bond more than 30 years. So I mean, that's, I think we're okay there. It's just, that's our philosophy. Allows only 2% voter petition to trigger an election on certificate issuance, certificate issuance. Currently it's 5% and it must enter into construction contracts within 180 days of authorization. What's interesting is it's authorization. It's not bond sale. I mean, we passed a $762 million bond in May of 2023. We sold $287 million of that bond within a month. We didn't, we didn't have all that within 180 days, but we had 762 authorized. So I can at least see, if you sell it, that's a little, still hard, but there's no way you're gonna get the whole 762 million. You didn't even sell it half, you, you know, you sell it in every two or three years based on cash flow. So that language is gonna, that's gonna cause a lot of issues and it's, it's not even gonna be feasible. And then they want, uh, and this one they're asking for a super majority, 60% of, of the support of the governing body of a taxing unit to approve a tax rate that's above the base rate. So again, they want you to, you know, as, uh, as was mentioned earlier, I think Gloria mentioned it, I know Anna's mentioned it before. No, I mentioned it at the last board meeting. We gave a, a beautiful story of what Leander ISD has done with our debt since 2015. And we were able to have a tax rate that was two or three, four cents higher than, than what was required. It was a little bit more than that earlier in the process. And we used that money to pay down debt and we refunded cabs. So we refinanced cabs. And we changed, completely changed our debt portfolio. You saw that graph last time. The blue and the yellow and the, the, our blue and gray and the highlight in the background and a, a beautiful story, you know, so. If you think about, and I was not in Leander in 2014, 15, but I do know that cabs were quite the topic. I just didn't realize Leander was the district they're talking about. And so, you know, they, they, they had no power blasting this district. And they had no power making you, no problem making you the poster child of, of what not to do, if you want to call it that. And yet now they want to take away the one tool that we use to completely revamp all of our debt and to get us in a position where we are, as, you know, if I remember correctly from the last, uh, presentation, uh, we have saved, I want to say it's about 260 million cash flow. I want to say it was a little bit less than that in the, uh, I mean, the 60 million on net present value just in all the refundings and the cabs that we've done. And that's not even including the refunding we're looking at. Uh, you just approved the parameter order at the last board meeting. So our debt, you know, in 2015 was over 75% was about cab. Now we're, after this next refund, we'll be under 20%. So, you know, I really wish the legislature, they should be singing that from the rooftops, you know? Because that's, we did exactly what we did. And now they're coming in saying, hey, great, great job. We're taking that, the biggest tool right out of your toolbox and, and other districts toolbox. So. It's one of those things that, you know, when my mom, when I got, when I would get really mad when I was a kid, you know, your mom would kind of put your arm around you and just like snuggle with you and just make you, you know, just keep you until you get calm. I just want to go to the legislative offices, close the door, just put my arm around her and just snuggle with her and say, hey, what are you doing here, you know? But, you know, snuggle might not be the best word to use with the legislator, but, but it's just kind of one of those things. You just like what, what, what are, you know, you're, you're taking the, the one tool and we've maximized it. I mean, we should, we should be the poster child of, of how to use that tool in the, in the best way. So we'll see what happens. A lot of times they will submit things that, like you said, it looks great on paper. But then when you really look at it, what does that really mean? Like you said, 20%? Doesn't really raise any red flags until you realize the MNO rate goes down each, each, these two years. And then before you know it, you're, you know, they've got what they wanted in, in a way and you're, 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 you're painted in a corner. You can't provide the needs for your students. So. I will watch that. I'm, I'm just proud to see that some of the committee substitutes are coming in and, and they're trying to address some of those language. Uh, but there's still some more that would need to be done, particularly with House Bill 19.
Well, thank you. I know you've been working behind the scenes, providing information. So I really appreciate you. Like we'll put in a board chat, you know, our legislative chat. Pete, we need numbers. And Pete gets it to us right away. So I really appreciate you just being very involved and getting that information.
No, I think that's, that's good to, to say is that as a legislative committee, um, we're able to immediately put in there like this bill's moving, this bill's coming up for committee. And, and, and Pete is like, okay, well, I've got, I've got some numbers. I can give them data. I can give them information. And that is such a testament to how great, I mean, I really appreciate the committee's work and to listen about those bills coming up, to ask those questions. And then Pete, you're jumping in. So thank you very much.
And just one thing to, I did have mentioned, not with House Bill 19, but is the, uh, House Bill Two is the ASAH. You know, so what, you know, the, the legislature made a promise, right? When they, when they passed, they increased from 40,000 homestead exemption to 100,000. They said, hey, we're gonna increase this. And as such, we're gonna hold districts harmless for any bonds that were authorized prior. We had a bond election made 2023, the law went to effect September. We were held harmless. And now, two years later, you know, a promise is just a promise. Now they want to come back. Now they're passing House Bill Two and they're saying, hey, if you pass a rate that's higher than your base rate, it doesn't give you an exception like this one at least gives you the super majority. This doesn't even give you an exception. If you pass a rate that's higher, we're gonna prorate down that, that whole harmless piece. We're gonna penalize you for the promise that we made last session if you have a rate that's higher. So basically they've, they've, they've kind of holding you hostage of that and put you in a really tough situation as, as, as trustees to do what's best for your community based on a bonds that were sold, analysis that were run, numbers that were calculated based on a promise in a, in a prior time. And now they're, they're changing that.
And that does go to that chain effect that we were talking about too, over time. Because there's also another property tax reduction bill on the floor. Love it. We need to reduce property taxes. Great. But at the same time, that conversation's going on. The conversation is, don't worry, schools, we got you. This is just about helping our taxpayers and we're gonna still give you funds. We, we still are gonna meet our obligations as a state. And then later that language change is one or two sessions down. And so you, you don't have those numbers anymore. So.
Exactly.
Yep. Um, for our community, if they do want to look, and I, I can't get it to work on my page right now, but I'm sure SCR can look at it, make sure it's up there. But on our Leander legislative priorities, Pete's listed a lot of bills, Anna's talked about a lot of bills, Dr. Gearing talked about a lot of bills. We have a list of public education bills, so you can see all those bills that are moving. So, all right. Thank you, Pete. Appreciate that.
I want to say one, sorry, one thing to Pete. Um, you know, on the surface, and you know it so in depth, you can write, and you're talking about INS and MNO and, and people at home, they may know exactly what you're talking about, but there's a lot of people that, that don't even know what those acronyms mean. And the reasons that they're doing those bills, unfortunately, I think you are a mathematician magician. Because what happened in 2014, 15 was the reason I started coming to the meetings. And that we didn't have you and there isn't, uh, was 11,999 other Peets that can help other districts solve their problems by using the tools that they have. I mean, coming up with a means, uh, it's incredible. What you did is incredible. Um, but I also think it's, we're very fortunate, one, to have you and also have the market that we have. If we were in a different market and a different not you, this is where, I don't know if the legislature can ever really legislate enough, uh, I don't know the right term, uh, morality in spending. But I think there's been enough not you Peets out there that they're trying to do something to curtail some of the overspending. And you are a magician and I am very grateful that you are tackling this head on because I didn't know how we're gonna do it. And I stood up here many times in the meetings and I said, what is the plan? And so you coming up with the plan, your, your team coming up with the, you know, winning awards, uh, is, is wonderful.
Oh, thank you. I will say, I've just got to be the tail end of this. I get to stand on the shoulders of many leaders that came before me and, and on the board. I remember, uh, you know, we had some board members that were very, very involved in that as well. Uh, I have two predecessors that were here before me in my role that were part of that, that restructure plan too. But I had the easy part. I just got to continue it. So, uh, but I appreciate your words. Uh, and also, you know, one of the, uh, one of, one of the, one of the key points is, uh, as I, oh, you know, you mentioned, uh, just for clarification, you know, I, I do say MNO and INS very often because that's my world, but you know, maintenance and operation. and O and INS very often because that's my world, but you know, maintenance and operation is our, our, our tax rate. It's about seventy-seven cents. I'm going to round up here. And our, and that, that pays for the day-to-day operations. That pays for our salaries, for our teachers and our staff and our utilities, electricity. We also have an INS rate, which is our bond rate. And that's what our, our community has a separate bond election for. That's about thirty-three cents. So on average, our total tax rate is a dollar ten, give or take. That's what you'll see on your, your tax bill you should have gotten the last couple of weeks or you'll get in the fall. You just got your value this time. So thirty-three cents over a dollar ten is about thirty percent. So that's, we're already above that twenty percent. So when I said that earlier, that's what, what I was, I mean, clarify that a little farther for the individuals that don't spend their Thursday evenings talking about school funding. I, I didn't know people didn't talk about school funding on Thursday nights. I thought, you know, but no, just kidding. It's, it's, it's a small group. So just, if you're listening to this, that's where the thirty percent came from. And that's, it shows you that we're already over the twenty percent. And even if they do put a substitute to push it off a year, it's not going to take very long. If the M and O rate keeps going down, you're going to find yourself, you know, painted in a corner again. So.
And then how can, this is for legislative committee and you, and how can the public, our community, how can they continue to stay engaged? And, I mean, the good thing is that we live in Austin, the Austin area and can easily get down to the Capitol. And so how can they really stay engaged? Because it looks like with some of what you've mentioned, there could be harm, unintended, probably unintended consequences, but really serious harm to our districts. And so how can they keep them, not just educated as to what this is, so they can make those necessary changes before enactment?
Well, I think here at Leander ISD, I think we do a very good job of informing our, our, our community. You know, we had a lot of people speak tonight and a lot of them, you know, some of them did specifically say, this isn't, Leander's not in this boat by themselves. This is something being done by the state legislature. So by us informing, us, me breaking down M and O and INS and what these bills mean, and for us having the, the data on our website that shows this is what, you know, we get property tax relief, that's fabulous. I mean, I love it. I mean, I enjoy it as much as the next person. But I'm one of the few, or I'm in school business, I realized that my M and O goes down and the state goes up equally. The school, my school, my taxes are going up, my value's going up, but my school's not able to be a better school because it's funded the same as it was six years ago. So how do we share that story? How do we put that out in the community so our community members will know? So when they do talk to their legislators or they're at a public meeting, they can ask, hey, great, I know you said we added eighteen billion of public ed, but wait a minute, you also reduced the school district's local tax collections by eighteen billion. The, the school didn't get ahead, you know. So how do you, I think informing is the key. That's really the only role that school districts can have, is to inform. And the more that we inform the, the public, the more we inform our legislatures, the better discussions that will happen. And hopefully, you know, I know there's some legislatures that probably, are probably known as not being pro public ed. I got that. But there's a lot of them that are. And so sometimes it's just making sure they understand what this bill really means. Because I've met a lot of legislators and they're great people, but they're not school business finance experts. There's probably down to about two or three or four that really, really fully understand it. And that number used to be about twenty back when, a long time ago. So just, you got a new, new crop in there. They're, they're a lot less experienced. And school finance is, is not easy. I mean, I don't know how I learned it, but I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's twenty-four years of repeat. I think I finally got it now. But there are some unique pieces to it. And to your word, to your comment earlier, Mr. Gautier, or trustee Gautier, that, nothing like making a comment and saying you're going to make a comment, then your mind goes blank. So you made a comment, and I will have to address that later because my mind just went blank. It was, it was positive, I promise. I just can't remember one of the comments. I just wanted to just address it, but I'll, I'll come back to it. Maybe in the budget presentation, I'll work it in if it pops back in my mind. Okay?
I just have one last comment, I hope. There's been quite a bit of discussion about TIA, the Teacher Incentive Allotment, and that looks like where they're putting more of the money. And I was just wondering, just for our, not, definitely not today, it's not on the agenda, but if we can get an agenda item. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to answer that. But I'll be honest, I'd rather wait until Casey's up here because that's one of the things on one, on the slides. And, I mean, Casey and I've had a conversation, but I don't want to take away a thunder. So we're going to, yeah, we'll bring that up there.
I think Francesca had a comment.
I was just wondering, because these bills, whether it's intentional or not, I guess, is a subjective item, they are going to cause harm and a lot of it. So I'm wondering what the conversations have been around financing for districts like ours where we've got our oldest high school currently undergoing a renovation that requires more bonds. We have aging facilities. There are districts all over the state with facilities that need bonds and now are likely not going to be able to get that money. So I'm curious as to what the conversation is around how school districts are going to keep up the finances required to keep up their facilities.
Yeah. The way the school funding system is, is designed, you can't build out of M and O. I mean, it's just, it's not the way it's designed. You have to have bonds or occasionally you can, you know, have some money over many years and get some fund balance and maybe build a, I built a building or two out of fund balance occasionally, but you can't keep up a whole district using that. And so you're right. If you have, if it makes it harder to have elections, you have to have, you know, sixty percent of your board, a super majority to pass a rate that's higher. If all the elections are on uniform election date, which sometimes typically, sometimes hurts the passage. I mean, it's, it's not drastic, but it does reduce. And then if you can't do the twenty percent test, you know, someone like Leander right now, who's in phase one at our Leander High School, this is going to be a two or three bond process. We planned on, we've built on. And now you can't get the second bond or the third bond. You know, you can't even meet the twenty percent test. You couldn't even take it to the voters if you wanted to. You know, I mean, ultimately, I've always thought the voters have the final say. And it's like that's being taken, that local control, whether it's from the board of trustees or from your local community, is, is being taken away. And so that's, you know, by, by rules or statute, that, that paints you in a, in a position where you can't do what, what you feel you need to do. And there's no way that your community can override that. And that's, that's frustrating. But you're right. There are lead districts and maybe, hopefully not Leander, but it's possible that it is us, that we get in a position where we're right in the middle of the, you know, we do phase one and phase two and we can't do phase three. Or we have to push phase three off for five years. And how is that fair for our students and for our community? It's not. So you're definitely, you're on to something. I mean, you're, you're seeing the big picture, you know, and it's going to be frustrating. And I did remember what I was going to say, Paul. You made a comment about, you know, the state or, you know, passing all these certain laws that you don't, you don't have a CFO like, like, like myself. And, you know, I, I appreciate that. I, I put myself maybe in the top twenty percent, but, but there are, you know, there are a lot of districts that have done a lot of interesting things. You know, it's, it's kind of like half the laws that I have to abide by are because somebody did something that wasn't really the smartest thing. And I think that's the same thing. So I think sometimes maybe their heart starts in the right place. You know, hey, this district did this, or this CFO did this, and we don't like it, or this board did that. We want to curb it, but when they curb it, they kind of go too far. And so where's that, where's that balance? Where's that sweet spot? And so that's where we have to have that communication, say, I understand, you don't want this to happen again, but if you do it like this, all these things, good things can't happen. So that's, that's why it's important that we have to be communicative and, and be informed and, and be on top of it.
All right. Thank you, Pete. We're going to move on to our next item, which is C six one, which is discussion of the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Grissom. So this agenda item is to discuss the recent intruder detection audits conducted at one or more of our campuses by the Texas Education Agency. The findings help us enhance safety protocols such as securing exterior doors to create a safer environment for students and staff. We acknowledge that parents and the community members are likely very interested in the details of the audit results. However, it is in the best interest of the students that we do not share information with the broader public. That is, as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. The specific details of the intruder detection audit will be discussed in the executive session and with the District Safety and Security Committee. Thank you.
You, thank you. Next, we're going to move over to item six C two, which is discussion of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six total compensation recommendations. Hello, Casey. Can you introduce all of our guests for us?
I was hoping to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Grissom. We're going to start by doing some introductions here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bella Mistoyeva. I oversee total rewards at here at Leander ISD.
Good evening. My name is Adam Stadler. I'm Senior Vice President with Marsh McLennan Agency. I'm the Benefits Consultant for Leander ISD. Thrilled to be here tonight.
I'm Pete Poppy, Chief Financial Officer. You may have heard of me. All right.
And we want to thank you for your ongoing commitment to ensuring that LISD employees have compensation and benefits that not only align with our area labor market, but also provide the support that LISD employees deserve as they serve the students of our community. The purpose of our presentation is to provide you with information about the upcoming employee compensation recommendations you will be receiving on, at our next planned board meeting on May the eighth. Compensation is only part of the total rewards that you've provided for LISD employees. In LISD, we strive to ensure that employees have learning opportunities that specifically address or help them with the important work that they do with students. We want to ensure that the support, it supports to help employees achieve work-life balance. We want to ensure that there's recognition for the incredible work that they do for students. And then tonight, we're really focusing our discussion on the next part that we want to ensure is that we're, our, our compensation and benefits align with your goals. Important part of total rewards in Leander ISD. I would continue to pursue our stated objectives that, for the LISD compensation system. I really want to focus on that last square, the one on the bottom right there. Most important is supporting the LISD mission, strategic plan, and LISD culture focused on student success. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Toyeva.
Oh, sorry. On this slide, we talked about the key two elements of that total rewards compensation strategy. One is internal equity and the second one is external market competitiveness. When we talk about internal equity, it's ensuring that our positions, we, we maintain the parity across all our positions within LISD. When we say that, it's, it's looking at relative positions and making sure that they are fairly compensated based on factors like job responsibilities, their freedom of making decisions, impact, and, you know, the, the value of the job itself. When we talk about market competitiveness, it's ensuring that we look at the market, we do the benchmarking, we see what's happening in the market, and ensuring that if market moves, we proactively address, address those changes happening in the market. There are different factors that can impact market as well, right? So we need to keep eye on it. And we do, at LISD, we regularly review our market data. We do pay studies on an annual basis. Moving to TASB pay study, as a reminder, in the past, LISD used to have a rotating basis compensation pay scales review. This year, we have partnered with TASB, who did the comprehensive, independent, third-party review of our entire compensation system. They have done market analysis. They have gathered our internal, they have done market analysis. They have gathered our internal data. They have sent out, last year, October, they have sent out a study to one hundred nine leaders at LISD, ninety-eight of which have responded, provided their feedback, provided their concerns and requests to TASB to review. That was, that was done directly to TASB from our leadership. Once this was received by TASB, they have analyzed all the requests. They have compared our pay scales to market data. And they have presented recommendations and observations to the board in February twenty-seventh during the board meeting, special board meeting, when they discussed the budget workshop. And here is the outcome of that study. This is the estimated total cost of TASB recommendations, the adjustments to our pay scales, and the impact to our entire LISD employees' pay. The total cost is three point five million. And on this slide, you can see the breakdown by the pay plan. Pay plans have changed. They look different. And the combination and the structure of the pay scales have also changed. So this is the zero percent across the board, purely pay scales adjustment, three point five million total cost.
We'd like to thank you, thank the board for taking this action and contracting with TASB. Thank you for investing in this process. We feel like it's been very beneficial and we're grateful for that. I'd like to talk, transition a little bit and talk more about benefits, starting with a few numbers for you. The majority of Leander ISD employees participate in the district's benefits plan. We have four thousand two hundred and forty-seven employees that are participating. We have one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two children that are participating in the district's benefits plan, our health benefits plan. And then we have four hundred and thirty spouses that are enrolled in the plan. In two thousand fifteen, Leander ISD began its partnership with the Marsh McLellan Agency as our Employee Benefits Consultant. This partnership is focused on bringing solutions for employee benefit needs while finding savings for Leander ISD. Bella and I interact with this partnership on a daily basis. Adam Stadler is an important part of this team. Adam is going to share some data points that will help to paint a clear picture about LISD benefits.
All right. Really going to kind of give a history of where we've been. I think there's a couple of new faces here that I don't recognize. So for those of you that I don't know, it's nice to meet you. Those that I do recognize, good to see you again. You know, there's only so much information that we can put on one slide as our relationship did start back as far as two thousand fifteen. But if we go back and look at two thousand twenty, what we're showing you here over the course of the last really five, six plan years is not only the average cost of the premium increases, as you can see in the first three, the two thousand twenty, two thousand one, two thousand two, there were actually decreases in employee contributions, with some slight increases over the next, over the last couple of years. We did have Blue Cross Blue Shield this entire time. As, as you can see here in two thousand twenty-one, we did implement the new partnership, or the additional partnership, I should say, with Healthcare Highways. For those of you not familiar, I think we all know who Blue Cross Blue Shield is. Very large national PPO network solution in healthcare highways is a Texas and Oklahoma, Louisiana-based, what we call a TPA. And they are a high-performance network solution, meaning that here in the Austin market, St. David's is the only in-network hospital. All the providers, majority of the providers, I don't want to say all, are in-network with Healthcare Highways. But what this does is that it steers your employees and the members to St. David's, where Healthcare Highways has a stronger contract. We do see that in the claims, which is something that we present quite frequently to your team here. And as you see as well with their health plan, because it is a high-performance solution and narrow in nature, we know that it is financially better off for the district. So we've tried to price those plan designs to incentivize employees and their, their families to enroll in those plans. Where you see twenty-four and twenty-five, we did have to make a couple of slight changes. Where you see 24 and 25, we did have to make a couple of slight changes, but we also changed the health plans themselves. So, for example, with the Healthcare Highways plans, we actually increased the actuarial relative value, meaning kind of what Pete was talking about earlier. The dollar goes further with the Healthcare Highways plans, so we were able to keep premiums either the same or increase the value, right, how much further your dollar goes, and maybe with a slight increase on the actual employee contributions. We had to do the same with the Blue Cross plans. We actually made those less rich in a way, but we also needed to increase the premiums because of the number of people that were interested in the HSA health plans, and we were trying to get people to understand what the value of the Healthcare Highways plan was, as well as the Frontier Clinic that we're going to talk about here that is now currently up and running and operational. When we look at the overall historical, look at what the district has contributed to the health plan, so what we do is we look at what is the total cost of the health plan, and then we start separating it up by plan design, by employee contribution, and district contribution. So, going back as far as 2007, where the district was contributing about $320 per eligible employee per month, and then it dropped to $310 because there were some restrictions that we needed to try and right-size some things going on in the district, while also trying to take care of our families and their teams, team members and families, excuse me. In 2020, we did see an increase. We really started to see the health plan itself not having a balance in the backend to be able to pay for claims. So, we did have to make some increases. We made some pretty, I don't want to call them drastic, but we did have to have some employee contribution increases, had some changes to the plan, which ultimately related, ended up having a really, really good, what we call, claims year, where our high-cost claimants were much less than they were historically, so we were actually able to build the fund balance up much faster than we originally anticipated, which as you can see here, the biggest change next came in 2023, 2024, where we had the strategy of moving on a per-eligible employee basis. So, whether or not the employee and their families enrolled in the health plan, the district was still contributing to the health plan. We moved it to a per-enrolled. So, there was a big switch. Working with Pete, the finance team, and the benefits team, we were able to still continue to fund the plan appropriately, and we are continuing to move forward. That's what the blue lines are, the black lines, those are the HSA contributions for each employee. So, the district has really remained stable minus a year and a half back in 2012 at $42 per employee who enrolls in an HSA-eligible plan. This one here shows the actual cost here, so go back to where I was talking about. We look at the total cost of the fund, or of the healthcare budget each year, and how much of that is paid for by the district from a percentage standpoint, and how much of that is paid for by the employees and the members on the plan. The yellow indicates what the employees are contributing to the plan, the blue being what Leander contributes to the plan. Where you see these fluctuations from 50 to 57, back down to 52, first of all, I want to call out everything in the yellow, that's not just premiums. That's going to be deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, and all out-of-pocket expenses that an employee contributes to the overall cost of the plan. In 2022 and 2023, we had some very high-cost claims that year, to the tune of 19 claims over $180,000, and four of those were over $375,000, and we had several that crested $1,005,000-plus, which is why you see the district ended up paying a little bit more those years instead of the employees. Where we have good plan years, right, our high-cost claimants come down, we implement some new solutions, maybe get some control over formularies within the drug plan, we start to see that contribution start to level out again. And finally, this is taking a look at some of our neighboring competitors, of course. You know, remaining self-insured, I would say that all of your neighbors currently, from the left to the right and south, are self-insured, which gives you more control for us to be able to impact premiums, claims, the overall design of the plan, right? You all get to, in tandem with the benefits team, get to really hone in on what levers do we want to pull? What changes can we make that are impactful in order to be able to continue to offer benefits to our employees? And that's where you get those richer designs, more flexibility, and you remain competitive with your neighboring school districts. In the middle column there, you can see who all is self-insured, and really, they all are, and then it shows what the monthly contribution per employee is that the other districts are contributing to their health plan. Now, each of those districts have very different risk profiles, so that's where you do see that fluctuation of 422 all the way up to 500. I also want to call out that this $460 per employee does not include any infusions or additional influxes in dollars that we need to continue to cover the cost of the plan and some of the changes that have been made over the last several years.
All right, so this slide, basically, we kind of revised it just a little bit, just kind of, to kind of coincide or coincide with how we give you the general fund finances. We give you three years out based on current law, based on everything being status quo. Obviously, things aren't going to be status quo. We make adjustments as more information comes in, and we budget each year, we do the annual budget process. So, if you go to the biggest section there in the middle, you know, 410, 492, 410, 465, 10, previously, we had showed you just going up $50 every year. That was the standard. It's about $2.5 million total as cost to the district. 23, 24, and 24, 25, we reduced the $3 million transfer to $1.5 million, and then $1.5 to this next year to zero. So, we were going up $2.5 million on the employee month contribution, but we were actually reducing the transfer for out by about $1.5. So, it was about a $1,000,000 to $900,000 net increase. Well, now the transfer out is zero, so now anytime going forward, the new cost will be $2.5 million per year, if we did $50. Now, we'll, the next slide will show us some things. Each year, we will analyze the data, look at the history, look at the claims. As Adam mentioned earlier, you know, Frontier, we're barely hitting the end of first quarter. I mean, we're just starting to see a smidgen of that result, and as we get more utilization and we get more information from that, we'll see how that helps with our claims and et cetera. But basically, I want to just kind of get you to the understanding that we're just going to show you the actual, and then each time we do the annual budget process, we'll go through and say, what do we need, what don't we need? What is, update the information, just like we do with our budget. So, if you go to the next slide, it'll show the effect of doing nothing different on the fund balance. Obviously, it's not a pretty picture, but it's not meant to scare you. It's just meant to say this is just based on everything remaining constant. If we don't do anything different, or if our claims stay the exact same, if Frontier comes in and does a little bit, and helps quite a bit, and that will change a little bit. If we have a bad year, that'll change a little bit. If we have a good year, that'll change a little bit. Then, as we go through the budget process, we'll begin these conversations very early in the budget process. I expect more toward the October, November, early December timeline to help us as one of the biggest, one of the big assumptions we'll put into, as we've been getting the development, budget development. So, if we do decide to go up $50, or we decide only go up $25, or we decide to do more or less, or keep it status quo and do an infusion, we do have, remember, we do have $10 million of the general fund. Was committed, now it's assigned to help the health insurance if needed. If we get any additional funds, I mean, it's one of those things we'll have to look at. I was talking with Adam the other day, you know, the way we get funded is a biennium, right? So, we get funded for the next two years, so that first year, I can give raises and do whatever, but I can't spend all that money in that first year, because I can't give, then I won't be able to give a raise the second year. So, some of that one-time money in that first year, we may have to use some of that to kind of front-load the health insurance plan. Then, the next year, we don't increase at all, because that goes to the raise, and then we just, each, every other year, we keep doing that, because the biennium works that way. A lot of strategies we can use, a lot of information, but the key was just to show you, based on current information, if we didn't do anything, this is what it would be, worst-case scenario, well, not worst-case scenario. We may have a bad year claims-wise, and that may be the worst-case scenario. But just to bring it to your attention, that we're going to have to each year probably have a little more in-depth discussion on how to fund this and what that does. As we get better information, and Adam and his team, and Casey and Bella and their team, work on, you know, getting new contracts and working on some opportunities and plan designs, you know, each year, we'll be able to, you know, come up with our recommendation for us to go forward. Still do infusions when we can, you know, that was a promise that was made. Unfortunately, just haven't had any infusions in the last two years, but state funding has not been our friend, and hopefully, that will soon change a little bit. But just, and then there's also, I believe it's Hospital 2911, which my understanding is not, not even, has not gotten any opposition at this point. So, it would actually, whenever the state legislature gives funds for TRS active care, the portion of those funds would go to districts that are self-funded to help those districts with their health insurance. So, we will see if that passes. That'd be great. If it, you know, like I said, each year, we just get more information, and if it passes, and then we'll have an idea what that is, we can incorporate that into the model. So, I'm not counting it, not counting the egg before it's hatched, but, you know, I know better than that. But it's out there. It's, you know, it was out there last session, it got discussion. This year, it's actually got a committee hearing, so each year, you just, you know, try to get a little farther down the road, you know? So, but there's some things that could happen, but there's also some discussions that we'll have in the budget process. So, just wanted to walk you through that. I know that slide probably may have scared you a little bit. It wasn't designed to scare you, it was just designed to kind of wake you up and get your attention a little bit, but just to know that's where we're at, very similar to how we do the general fund with the three-year projection.
And one of the measures that we believe can help address this is the new Frontier Clinic that was open in January of this school year. January 19th, LISD opened the Frontier Direct Care Clinic. This clinic is an example of the creative measures that the district is taking to better provide medical support to employees and reduce overall district costs. Our clinic is the first of its kind in central Texas serving school district employees. Quality, convenience, and cost savings are the goal of the clinic. LISD employees enrolled in the co-play plan do not pay anything to visit the clinic. Those enrolled in the high-deductible plan do not pay anything for preventative visits and will be charged a reduced rate for other types of visits. Projected savings for LISD for 2025 are just over $556,000 for the school year, or for the plan year. So far, the clinic has been well-received by LISD employees. So far, they have had, pardon?
Is that, it's been well-received by 9%? Is that like the percent of people that have actually used it?
Right, that's correct. So, it's actually up to, it's up to 11%.
Okay. It's very new, right?
It went up to 11%.
Okay.
And so, it's been well-received so far, and the rating, they have a net promoter score that score ranges, it can be as low as negative 100 all the way up to positive 100. They're at a 90 right now, so it's kind of a very favorable response. So far, the clinic has had, or has called and texted, we have a lot of folks in here that are getting lots of calls and texts. We've had 18,024 calls and texts, and so they're reaching out to our community, or to our school district community. They've had 780 appointments so far, so it's being used. Obviously, we want to see that increase drastically. Frontier and LISD HR department are partnering to get the word out. So, we're visiting campuses and other locations in the school district. So far, we've had 12 site visits. We plan to continue having other site visits as soon as we can get in front of employees.
I have one question. This is located up here off of Hero's Way, right? So, there's one location.
Yes.
So, that could be a barrier for some of our individuals, right, who live? Our district's huge, so is there, how will we, will they expand to like a central part of the district? Because, no, this is all the way near my house. This is like all the way near my house, so you're talking like a 30-minute drive from this location to there.
Correct.
And so, I'm just wondering if that is creating a barrier for some of our employees? Do we anticipate having something closer?
We want to explore the success of this clinic and make decisions based on the success of this clinic. And so far, we're seeing some really good indicators, for sure. Adam, did you want to piggyback, or Bella?
So, the slide that you're seeing right here is actually from an employee survey. So, for those that responded, it was 9% that have heard of Frontier and have actually used the services. The 62%, yes, they've heard of it, but they had not been into the clinic yet. So, to your question, we actually did a heat map of where all the employees live and their families and kind of triangulate based on where life happens, right? Target, HEB, Starbucks, it's not necessarily 100% around where you work. So, that's why that location was chosen, and Chick-fil-A, I can't forget Chick-fil-A. That's why that location was chosen. There are 21, 22 people in that clinic. It's a 3,600-square-foot clinic, nine providers, nine MAs, a nurse manager, and an office manager, along with just operations oversight. The reason that I was sitting here kind of shaking my head, I go, no, it's not really creating a barrier, because each member, and that's what all these calls and text messages have been about, is your doctor actually reaching out to you. So, you can text, call, FaceTime your provider anytime. You don't have to go to the clinic, unless they really want you to come in, and they, that's kind of been part of the marketing campaign, is the two biggest barriers in healthcare are cost and access. We broke those down by putting in this clinic, and if you're on a co-pay plan, you pay nothing anytime you go in. If you're on the high-deductible plan, as Casey was saying, it's a reduced rate, and that's an IRS rule. It's not a Leander rule, it's not a consultant rule, that's an IRS rule. There has to be first-dollar payment until you can have that $0 cost. Now, if an employee or family has met their deductible on a high-deductible plan, it's $0, 100%. And what is even more interesting about this is if they have the ability to refer out, they're working with providers and systems to create a cash payment upfront that is also at a much reduced rate than what we have with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Healthcare Highways.
I love that, the heat map, that, I mean, it also goes to show the city of Leander, where a lot of our employees live, and so, I really didn't anticipate that, and so, I'm grateful that y'all went that extra step to look at that. That's awesome.
It was over 76%, I think, live within a 10-mile radius.
Wow, thank you. I appreciate that.
No, we do have a very keen eye on those that live a little bit further out, and there are solutions, but we want to make sure that we're just getting the word out, right, before we really ramp it up.
And I've heard from staff in various parts of our district who are going to Frontier, reaching out to Frontier, and they love it. So, I also have heard from staff, but it's anecdotal. But it's really positive. As a trustee, for something we want to point out, thank you, this has been great. And so, I'm very excited about this.
We are too. We are too, and yes, we look at, obviously, the number-one priorities are employee health and making sure that we're providing the best for them, but as you look at that graph that we looked at a while ago showing the concerning trend that we're seeing, this is a measure that the school district is thinking to help address that concerning trend. And hopefully, we'll see the success that's projected with this Frontier Clinic.
If I can jump into, Frontier also indicated that this is exactly where they wanted to be by this time.
That is correct. Yes, we're right around 12, just over 12% utilization, which in the first quarter is exactly on par with where we want to be and where other employers who have done this in other parts of the state, that's, we're right where they were same time.
So, we're really excited about the opportunity that we have with the Frontier Clinic. We are looking forward to the next planned year, planned year 2026, and we do have some different goals. Some of our goals will remain the same for next, for 2026. We're still committed to maintaining a healthy fund balance and seeking innovative ways to provide benefits packages for our employees. But after much consideration and discussing, discussion, we've looked at making some modifications to our 2026 goals. We are preparing to market stop-loss and EAP, the Employee Assistance Program, to ensure that we're getting the best overall value for employees. We're looking to have an RFP for stop-loss next month, and RFP for EAP in October. We're also adjusting the objectives to address having limited or no growth in employee enrollment. So, you might recall that we typically have higher enrollment each year. The assumption that was made this for 2026 is that we won't have any growth in the participation. This last change is what we, this last change is that we will begin promoting our existing resources more heavily that are already in place to maximize the value for Leander employees.
If I may add on the last point here, I think promoting is very key, because we can do a lot of good things in LISD, but if employees are not aware of those and if they do not see the benefits for them and their families in what we do, it doesn't make really sense. So, we focus on, you know, the standard sending out emails from HR benefits department. So we focus on, you know, the standard sending out emails from HR benefits department do not work. So we're changing the concept here, going out and visiting employees during their staff meetings where we know 100% that they are there. And we ask principals, we ask department heads, give us 10, 15 minutes to talk about things that we do for our employees so they can hear us out and then come to us and ask questions if they want to hear more. So I think promoting is important here.
Absolutely, thanks Bella. On May 8th, we're going to be back talking with you again. I will, will return and share recommendations for you about employee compensation. In the next few slides, we will highlight the proposed recommendations.
Yeah, so this is the same 3.5 million total, total cost, estimated cost of T A S B recommendations. Just wanted to point out that stipends and substitute pay is still under review and we will be coming back to you with the recommendations in the next upcoming meetings.
And this brings us to our draft recommendations that we hope to share with you on May 8th. Note that the proposed, that these recommendations are written in a manner that allows for some flexibility as we wait for the outcome of the 2025 legislative session. The first, implementation of pay scales adjustment recommended by the T A S B compensation review. The second recommendation is authorization for Dr. Gearing to approve a one-time, one-time sum retention payment. And the third is authorization for Dr. Gearing to amend the compensation plan after the start of the fiscal year based on the outcome of the 2025 legislative session. I know that we've covered a lot here. We would love to engage with you in discussion and answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question, actually, let me do my statement so I can just get that out of the way, which is on healthcare. And I've talked to, well, first of all, you've heard me on the dais, but I've, I've also called Casey and Pete too. To me, I, I, I want to continue to look at like the bigger picture. And I, I get there's really hard discussions we've got to make about funding coming up. And Pete, we'll, we'll continue to work on those and the structural things. But for me, healthcare is so important. And it's not just about, like when you look at the plan, it looks low, but those first two ones are high deductible plans. So then that's, that means that when you look at overall what the person has to pay out of their pocket, they're going to pay a little more than those P P O ones will. And those P P O plans cost a whole lot more when you're looking at dollars to dollars. It also is going to be different to a teacher who had a 4% raise of a $19 fee than a teacher with a family that a 4% raise of a $700 amount, right? And so I get that when we look at percentages, sometimes we're like, we're trying to keep this equity and, and, and make it as even as we can. But I just want to make sure we're looking at the whole picture as we move forward. Specifically, I think healthcare is so important to continue to let our staff know that they are valued and they are appreciated. And especially if we want this to be a career that you can go in, then you should be able to get healthcare for you and your family. I'm not really sure how that looks and I really appreciate the Frontier Direct move, I think that's great. But only families who are currently in the system can go to that. That doesn't answer for any of my kids or any of the spouses that are not in this healthcare plan. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. And then Casey, you and I also talked about the fact of like how much they're spinning towards healthcare is actually a percent of their paycheck. So even if I give a teacher a raise or staff member a raise and I'm taking all of this or that same raise and maybe a little extra out from healthcare, then it really wasn't a raise. So I want to make sure we look at this as we move forward kind of together. I always appreciate the fact that the compensation with healthcare, because I want to know totally what is our staff going to see in their paycheck? And then that's just my statement as we keep moving forward, that's all. You don't have to answer questions. T I, T I, the teacher incentive allotment, Casey, you said you had a small little, little update. And so I just thought this would be a great time to ask you about it, since we talked about it and keyed it up before. Because you and I had talked about that of like, what does that mean for Leander I S D since the legislature is talking about it so much as a main funding mechanism? And you told me, but it doesn't solve all the issues, so.
Right, right. And thank you, I'm so glad you pointed out the important, importance of us looking at compensation and benefits together. This is my first year in Leander I S D. In my past world, we separated the two. And it, it, putting them together makes better sense because we do need to look at the whole picture for employees. So I'm grateful that leadership at Leander I S D does do that. Teacher incentive allotment is on the tips of everyone's tongue these days. Leander I S D is part of the teacher incentive allotment already. We have teachers that possess the National Board Certification, which means they are part of the teacher incentive allotment. The benefits for, you know, this, we all want teachers to have more money. It's important, it's, it's a priority of leadership in Leander I S D. Opportunity exists for every teacher and it supports quality instruction. We have a new cohort in Leander I S D that's starting right now as we speak. Applications have already gone out. They are set to come back on May 4th. And so applications have gone out to teachers if they want to participate in the cohort that we're organizing. We hope to have teach 10 teachers in next year's cohort. This is being led by Dr. Amy Sharp. We're super excited because she is certified herself and has already worked with teachers to help them secure this important certification. The good news about this is it's not just, it's not just securing more money for teachers or adding to credentials, it's adding to quality instruction in classrooms. And so this doesn't just result in making sure we have more money for our teachers. We're, we're equipping teachers with the cohort to better be, be better prepared to serve the students in classroom. This cohort starts this summer, so training starts during the summertime. And it's significant money. If you're a ti, if you're a teacher at a title campus that's taking part in the cohort and finishes his or her certification, it's up to $10,000 annual added to their compensation. Every year, they'll have 10,000 added to their compensation. So this is a significant increase for teachers. And it does not include the stipend that we currently have for Leander I S D teachers. I know there's lots of other discussion about T I A, their legislative, legislative body is discussing right now. We are continuing to explore the option in Leander I S D. I mentioned to Trish the other day that this really starts with teacher voice. There's a lot of research out there that doesn't support pay per for performance. We want to start with teachers and make sure that teachers fully understand this before even considering, so that's our starting point. This will be a multi-year process in Leander I S D. And every step of the way, we're going to, of course, have your voice in decision-making and the voice of our teachers. We're going to take a very measured approach with a teacher incentive allotment.
I have another question about the T I A. Just for my quick statement, I've yet to talk to a teacher that supports the T I A. They don't, every teacher I've talked to, they don't, they don't want it. But one aspect of that that I feel like is not talked about is the cost of implementing more of the T I A. Because I've talked with trustees from districts around the state, around the same size as ours. They had to hire entire departments of people just to process the paperwork required for a district to do all of this. And I'm curious for your perspective about that, like if this was something that everybody all of a sudden decided they wanted to do, how does the H R staff deal with that? Because we're already trimming back in all areas, including central admin. And I'm, you know, like I said, I'm talking with other districts and they needed a whole, you know, team of people just to deal with that because it was so excessive.
Thank you for making that point. I, it, I'm glad you've had that discussion with another school district. I was just talking with one of my colleagues in a Houston area school district and she told me that they had to hire additional staff members to implement T I A in the school district. And the cost of hiring the staff members was actually more than the school district received back in funding for teachers. And so it's very disheartening for her and for the work that they have put into making sure that this option was there for them. And so I, this, we're, we're, we're running at full capacity right now in the H R department. We have lost two positions already. And so I, I, I do anticipate that if, as we consider going forward with teacher incentive allotment, that this would be a collaborative effort. Obviously, there's a lot of work for H R to do, but there's also some curriculum work too because there's big pieces of teacher incentive allotment that would have an impact on our curriculum department too. So it's a multi-department impact that this type of effort could have. At the end of the day, our first step really is to start with our teachers and gain an understanding of what they believe and what, how they think that this could potentially impact the culture that, that has been so carefully developed here in Leander.
Is this a peak question to ask later or question to ask you? Which is, I was just telling Francesca, so we have the House and Senate bills moving that will do teacher-staff increase. I think the anticipation is, I mean, we've heard over and over again, there is going to be a focus on our teacher salary. And it depends on which version goes and it may also include counselors and librarians, but it's not all the staff. So I think that the thought is those increases come in, so we actually do see some of our staff get a pay raise. But it, they don't cover all of our staff. So we're going to have to also make sure we pay attention to that because you're just putting in all these compensation structures. How are you planning for that right now? Like, I mean, seriously, there's so many different options that are all moving. Who knows how it all works out? Is that something that you're working on or you work closely with Pete? And, and where, when we're look, when I, when our staff is looking at the 0% increase, like, great, no increase. It's like, well, no, actually, we're planning because they're saying that, that the legislature is going to do that for some people, but we still have to figure out what we're doing for the rest, right?
That's one of the slides in the next presentation. If you don't mind waiting, I'm more happy to address that. Unless Casey wants to add to it.
I just wanted to point out that Pete and I talk about this every single day. We've become best friends talking about how important this is and recognizing that there does, you know, as a raise happens for teachers, it has an impact on other pay scales. If you think about our assistant principals and counselors, critical for the success of Leander I S D students. As you think about a raise for teachers, it brings them closer to these important people. We need to have some career pathways for these important positions in Leander. And compressing the salaries, pay scales could have a damaging impact. So yes, we do need to continue to look at these other employee groups that aren't going to be touched by any raises.
Kate, Casey, I'm, oh, I apologize. Casey, if I may, can I just, is that part of the recommendation that allows that flexibility to address those particular pay skills? Can you speak to that just?
Certainly, thank you, Dr. Kristin. If you look at the recommendations, we've, there, we've written the last two recommendations to, to allow for some flexibility dependent on what, or depending on what the legislature does. And so we want to be able to have that flexibility after the budget's approved. If the legislature approves additional funding, then we would like to move forward with, of course, pushing that funding to employees in Leander. And so that's why the recommendations are written this way. The first is the one for the, the one-time, the, the one-time supplement for employees. And then the second one allows for changes in compensation after the legislature takes action, allowing the Dr. Gearing to have that type of, the authorization to make those changes.
I have a question about that. When we looked at the T A S B survey, there were some positions that they showed where we were greatly over-market on those positions. And so we're doing these market adjustments and when, when we're saying we're going to increase, are we going to increase across the board in, in the positions where T A S B said? We were on some of them, you know, you're 10, 15, 20% over-market. Are we just going to keep increasing those over-market even more? Or when we're looking at these adjustments, are we looking at where we're going to increase those so that we're not continuing those gaps?
That's an important conversation that we just haven't had yet. We haven't gotten that for, obviously, that's a great point. It has to be considered as we begin, begin coming up with a plan to, to address that. But we haven't had that conversation yet. Bella, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, usually, the across-the-board is considered first. And then if we still need to bring the pay scales or adjustments to the market, then we bring them in. So the, the proposals, if you remember, T A S B, when presented the recommendations, there were two, three options, two, three models. And you selected the 0% increase. So the one that they, they presented also 1% and 1.5. So the, there was a split on how does that impact the increase as a across-the-board and then the adjustments? So first was the increase across the board. And then if they, we still see that the positions fall behind the market with that across the board, they will bring them to the, as an adjustments to the scale.
I guess in the budget situation.
If, if I can.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Sorry, it's hard, it's hard to sell, yeah, sorry. This is the beauty of doing the T A S B adjustments this way is that anything that's already over the market or at the market value doesn't get adjusted is my understanding. So I, I don't know if they can address that, but I don't think any of those that are over the market get adjusted. They just stay where they are in order for the others to catch up.
Okay, that, that's what I was hoping. I think what I heard before was we're going to increase everybody and then we're going to increase the people who are below even more. And I was like, can we?
No.
Okay.
Not at all, no.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions? I think, I know we're on the discussion slide.
One last comment or clarification. So you said that we're already implementing one aspect of the T I A, which is the National Board Certification for Teachers. And we already have some teachers who are taking advantage of that to the tune of an additional $10,000 a year from the state.
Right, depending on the campus they're located on. If they're on a title campus, they can make up to $10,000. If they're not on a title campus, a campus that doesn't have the same needs, I think the, the minimum is 2,800. We do have someone that, that has, has, has already submitted an application that's on one of the campuses that would get the $10,000 incentive.
Okay, all right, thanks. And, and so teachers just need to, where possible, or if they qualify, get that certification and maintain it?
Absolutely. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. It's great professional learning for teachers. Like I mentioned earlier, the huge gain is what's going to happen in the classroom in addition to the compensation increase.
Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions? All right, we're going to move on to item 63, which is our discussion of our 2024-25 budget projections.
We talk about budget, I sit alone.
I know, everybody wants to get away from you. Get away from you. And then right after that, we're just going to roll right into the one after that. So let's, let's start with our 2024-25 budget projections.
All right, just to highlight, this is what we bring to you every month. So if you can read that, you have better eyes than I do. But basically, just really highlight, we are forecasting 23.8 million, which is a little bit lower than what we, I think we started in the 25.6 range, maybe a little bit higher than that. So as, each month, we get a little better information. Just one thing I do want to note, it has an asterisk up there on the federal. We submitted the final, our final appeal to, for Shar's on one Wednesday, that was due Wednesday. And when you submit that final appeal, everything gets put on hold for any payments. And so if we had, just FYI, if we had appealed 2022, those payments haven't been made. But we, we didn't, we weren't, that wasn't us, but this is us for this year. So that will, probably will not receive those funds prior to June 30th, which, we're not cash basis. But I mean, we'll be able to, if, if, we'll talk to the auditor and if we're able to come up with some kind of an estimate and we'll, we'll go conservative, that we will have, we're able to, to book that as, as, as a due front from the state. But just want to give you a heads up, I mean, it's, it's 20. But just want to give you a heads up, I mean, it's, it's 20, you know, 23.8, it's 4.9 budgeted for SHARs, and more than likely, that will not be received by June 30th, but we'll, but we'll have, you know, we'll have an estimate, and we'll be able to find a way to book that as much, as best as we can. And then there is, was it, is it House Bill 100 or 500? I think is the supplemental bill that would help, that would pay districts for the loss in SHARs monies that they received from last year. Again, I'm not counting that, I'm not banking on that, but I appreciate the fact that someone even submitted it, and they've had the discussion, so. Because I think it, it was a grave injustice that was, that was done to school districts in the manner from, from the, that, from the department not to be named. But it was just kinda, it was very frustrating, and put districts in a bad position. My budget's already been adopted, rules were changed, and it was after the fact. So just to, again, focus on that, we're at, forecasting at 23.8, with assuming that we received the SHARs funds, so. I guess it's getting lower as we get better information, but is there, we won't have an answer if there are any questions on that? Isn't that, that's a discussion item, so. We'll go to the next item, the 25-26 budget? All right.
Yes, let's do it. Items 6C4.
All right, so the 25-26 budget development, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go super fast, but I'm not gonna, a lot of this is repeat, so if it's a repeat, I want to just kinda, just glide over it. Feel free to, if you have any questions, the end of the presentation will be more of the discussion going forward. Again, our purpose, just go over the 25-26 budget, including the, finalizing the budget reductions. Our theme, and I, I kinda think this might be our theme next year too, but it's review, revise, recalibrate, reinvent. And we're doing all four. I mean, it's, you know, the four Rs. So our revenue and assumptions, just to reiterate, we use the lower model, the 42,448 students, that's about a delta of about 165 students lower than we budgeted last year. Increased our attendance rate from 94% to 94.125, the gold penny yield increase. We did go through and change some courses that were not, that were, that were, that kind of fell into the regular ed category, but that they were close to the current tech, so we made some adjustments and implemented those, and increased our funding a little bit. And then budgeting payroll, we did it at 98%. I think we did, cut 97 and a half last year, and it was a little tight, so we kinda went back to 98, because we felt like we put ourselves, painted it a little too tight. As mentioned earlier, there was no pay increase included. There is the pay study adjustments totaling. We have 3591819, but if you just saw the presentation before, it was 3540565. So we submitted our times at different times, and so there are different changes being made, so. You know, the delta there is $51,254. I think we're okay, so. But just want you to know, that I do know that those numbers don't match, okay? We have some positions to open, open Denise Geiger Campus Center, Campus Center, the Little Live Instruction Materials Center, funds established the police department. We do, did increase the healthcare, the $50 this year. We also reduced the, will transfer out from 1.5 to zero, so we did increase the 2.5, but we decreased expense 1.5, so net of about a million. And the budget parameter we updated, or the board updated and approved, from 3% to 4.5, which puts us at a deficit of 19.6 million. And so that's kinda where we land, where we are. So as far as the staff goes, we've implemented, nothing changed at elementaries, those were everything, we follow the guidelines, reduced library positions, eliminated the IB at the two elementaries, changed the ratio from 18.1 to 20.1 for pre-K, and then we staffed on reduced growth. Middle schools, we maintain the current assistant principal staffing guidelines. We went from facilitators from nine to three, would hear the staffing guidelines, so we tightened it a little bit, and just followed what we had. We adjusted staffing formula to 23 to one, and we reduce, based on, staffed on reduced growth. High school, we maintain the current assistant principal staffing guidelines, we put those positions back in, restructured the IB program to extend it for the next two years, I believe. Adherence to staffing guidelines and adjust the staffing formula to 22 to one, I believe it was at 20, and then staffed on reduced growth. So pretty much what the board's already approved and what we've discussed. Central administration, this slide is the same. None of these slides have really changed, these are just, just reiterating. About two point, a little over 2 million in positions, two and a half percent operating budget, a little over one, the estimate is about 3.08 million. All said and done, after putting the APs back in, it's about 14.2 million reduction, which was the impact that we did for this 25-26. So when we begin to look at the, the final numbers here, we look at our enrollment, the 42,448, an early estimate in the far right column was with the reductions. So revenues of just under 448 million, total payroll, just payroll expenses of 399, 567. You go through the other expenditures, non-payroll, and the transfer out. Currently, we're about 247,598 above the 4.5%. There are some estimates in there, as we get more accurate information, we feel we'll be able to get to that four and a half percent, that should not be a problem.
So Pete, before you leave that slide, just to make sure that doesn't get skipped over. So there's a number circled, and it looks like you're not following our parameter, but you're saying, this is as of the calculations, when you had to present to the board, you're still doing calculations, and that's why you're circling, you're like, this will get to where we need to get it to. This is, this is just so we could?
Yeah, we still have some placeholders in the, in the budget, like $150,000 we have in there for the 18-plus and the Science Materials Center.
Right.
We also have 150,000 for the, starting the EC in the middle of the year, like, looks like we do a normal campus. Well, those two programs are very different than when you open a new campus, and so we don't believe it's gonna be 150,000, but Gina and our staff are working with HR and the powers that be to kinda go through, and here's how we do the 150, let's go through line-by-line items, and maybe it's only 110, you know. So we usually start custodians in that one month of June, in some other positions, we may not do that for these two facilities, just depending on when we get certificate of occupancy. So those numbers come in, we get a few more estimates in there, we, we fully expect to be able to get to the, to the, for, to meet the board's parameter, four and a half percent.
Thank you, no, it shows us how it's a moving project.
Yeah, it's, it's a process, we're getting close. So this is one thing I really want to kinda focus on, whether whatever passes or doesn't pass, I want to, to clarify, because some people are gonna look at and go, oh, if House Bill Two passes, it's 10 million for us, if committee substitute passes, it's 21 million. But if that were to pass, let's look at what that number is. So I heard someone say the other day, whenever you see something good, and they see something good, they say yummy. So it's a, before we look at getting yummy with 10 million or yummy with 21 million, let's look at what that is. So that, if, if we do House Bill Two, and we got 10, 10 and a half million, well, 4 million of that has to go to payroll. I mean, and none of us in this room are gonna argue with, with, with putting 40% of that toward our, our teachers and staff. Probably another one and a half to two million is gonna need to go to pay for the other 50% of our employees that aren't on campuses, that aren't teachers, that, so that's, you know, we have to take care. So if you're really looking at 10, 10 and a half million in revenue, you're gonna spend about five and a half to six, just on, on four mandated and two just to, to, to take care of all your staff. And so net effect, before health insurance, before anything else, you have about $4 million. And you're already at a 19.5, 19.6 deficit, so even if you didn't, even if healthcare worked miracles and we were fine, didn't need anything, even if nobody, we didn't add any positions back, you're really down to 15 million above, of the deficit above, the 3%, which is coming up here. We still have those four Rs to do for this next year. I mean, it was difficult, what we did, but I don't, I want to be very clear, that process is gonna have to continue throughout this next year. And even if the committee substitute came in at 21 million, well, 8 million has to go to teachers, another two to three for everybody else. So again, you're looking at six to seven million towards a deficit, that we're above that, so we still have to, to work at, how do we increase efficiencies? How can we revise our staffing guidelines? How do we get everybody involved? It's not just, you know, Pete and Casey, I mean, it's, get some principals, get other staff, and how can we staff differently? How can we look at best practices as far as custodial staffing, as far as maintenance, you know, everything that we, we have to look at every, every, every department. So one of the things I've, I've mentioned earlier in, in the chief's meetings, I can't remember if I mentioned it here or not, but is, I shared an article about 1% improvement, just the cycling team of the, of the British Cycling Team. In the 2000s, they were terrible, they hired a new coach, he didn't come in and make a lot of false promises, he just said, hey, I want you guys to improve 1% in everything you do. So he had surgeons come in, told them how to wash their hands the right way, so they would, less chance of getting sick. They had custom mattresses made for each athlete, so they would sleep better, they had, you know, all these things that they did, just 1% everywhere around, and then all of a sudden, they started winning the Tour de France, and they started winning Olympic medals. And back in the day, no bike company wanted them to ride their bikes, and now they were clamoring for them to ride their bicycles for advertising. So that's kinda what we're doing. It's, you know, we can talk about teaching positions, but it's 1% everywhere. It's teaching, it's the department, it's operations, it's HVAC, I mean, everything has to look, if we can all get 1% better discontinuously each year, we'll get big gains, but it's not hurting one particular area, it's 1%. And so it's, everybody's taking it a little bit, in, 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 in a slower way, and, and able to, and, and work on their efficiencies, and do those things. So I think even, I guess that basically what I'm trying to say is the cavalry's not coming, and even if they did come with what's being proposed, that's not gonna solve, it'll help, but it's not gonna solve.
Pete, I think we talked about this on the phone, so I'll put this in here, because then I can be done, which is, we said that, you know, there's an, there's an issue here, it's, it's, we're, we're trying to, to solve, I can't even remember the word right now, because it's now 10 o'clock. But we said, you know, it's, it's like, you know, there's a scale issue here that we're trying to, like, figure out something that's gonna, it needs more than just this one-time infusion from legislation that they're looking at. And, and you said, you told me different thoughts, like, you are bringing thoughts to the table, and I think that's important, because right now, this is really depressing, and I think I should just leave at this moment. But, but you have had discussions, and you are working on some solutions, and I know they're not all gonna be presented tonight, but there are things that you, you're presenting to say, look, there are things we can do that, that address innovative in how we can, how we can move forward in this environment.
Yeah, we're, everybody in the, in the, I would say, chief's cabinet, probably throughout the district, is looking at how can we do things differently and better. I mean, you know, I appreciate the fact that, I get to be the one that kinda talks about it up here, but it's not my ideas, it's, I mean, it's a team, there's a bunch of us that we're all, everybody's invested in how can we do things better, how can we do things more efficient, how can we increase revenue as well? I mean, what are the things that we can do? To hit this from two ways, and obviously, there's the expense side, but there's obviously revenue generating opportunities as well. So how can we maximize those and, and do those things, do, make those things a little different, but let's have the discussion, put everything on the table, so we can try to find a way that we can all feel good about, and still provide the services that we want for our community and our students. And that, you know, we appreciate, or the four and a half percent deficit, but we understand, you know, that's, that's not, that's not sustainable. We'll get us through this next year, but we're still reinventing, still focusing on what can we do to save, to be more efficient, to streamline. And so those conversations will, will continue through the summer and the fall, as we begin, the late fall, we start the budget process again. And I expect that will probably very, being done pretty much every district across the state of Texas as well. I don't, it won't be, Leander will not be the only person having those discussions. So if we look at going forward the next couple of years, we use the, you know, the, actually, you know, 26, 27, where actually, the data shows us, or the demographic data actually shows us decreasing. Now, that may change, we'll, we'll have some, we'll see what our pre-K does, we'll see what some of the things that we do, but, I mean, based on those numbers, it goes down, then we go back up. You know, some of the revenues in there, we do have, you know, we're kinda, we're kinda dipping out of that fast-growth allotment, and then about two years later, we completely fall out of it, based on, on these numbers. So there's, there's some revenue pieces there as well. You know, other than that, I just wanted to kinda just point out the revenue piece, we, we kinda fluctuate, we do go up, our expenses go up, just based on a flat, you know, I think we built in here 2% like we normally do on the raises. Obviously, that's not binding, but I mean, it's just what we, that's our goal, we always try to start with that. If you look at the operating expenditures, look at the two red lines at the bottom, so if you look at it, 26, 27, you know, we're still projecting to be, and this is, this is current law, so this is not including House Bill One, or, or House Bill Two, or, or committee substitute, but just current law. We're still looking at being 16 million dollars over, and we put in the 3%. We weren't, we, we just assumed a 3% like, like normal, not the four and a half percent, so we're looking at, assuming it's 16 million over the 3% threshold, the following year, 30 million over the 3% threshold. So that's why I made the comment, we'll see what the state does, but we still have to come in and look, and, and look at some areas that we can do things differently, maybe tighten the belt, increase revenues, you know, do some things. And so we're aware of that. Again, it's not meant to, to scare, but it is meant to just bring to your attention, and, and, and at certain aspects, it is scary, because you know what the state's gonna do on that. Just kinda reiterate what we've got coming up, we received certified estimates, they're due April 25th, of our property values. We'll prove the compensation plan on, on May 8th, we'll call a budget hearing on that same meeting. We'll present the near final 2025-26 budget on May 29th, and then we will post everything on May 23rd and May 30th, and then we plan to adopt a budget on June 19th. So after that sad, you know, I mean, not greatest outlook, but, I mean, we are aware of it, and we are, we're working on it, we weren't happy to answer any questions on this budget or in the future years.
I have a question. I've been asking this question here in an email, so it goes back to elementary staffing and program reduction updates. I'm not sure if this is a question for you, or it's a question for Dr. Grissom, or for Casey. So I keep asking, right, we are using our reduced growth projections, and I know on April 11th, principals were given projected enrollment of what next year could look like.
Yeah.
And we've got some campuses, based on what numbers we gave in regards to surplus staff, some of those campuses are over. So when I start looking at the PASA report that was presented to us, and I look at some of these projections that were, that principals had, that April 11th report, and I'm wondering, why are we using the regrowth, reduced growth scenario for these campuses that we know are going to be over the mark? Because, I mean, I'm not gonna say the names, but if I look at the PASA report, it's showing this one campus at 927 kids next year. It's the same report that's given the reduced scenario for these other campuses, that it is on cue. However, we're staffing it at a 751. There's quite a few element, it's elementary that seems to be the issue here. Secondary seems to be on par, I'm gonna say, and y'all know, I did not like that secondary rezone, but for the most part, like, our middle school numbers, we've got two middle schools that are gonna be over 1,400 next year. And I start thinking about, that's another question, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand why, why are we putting these campuses in a position where we know they are not on a reduced growth projection?
Let me, let me follow up with those, because I know that on the PASA report, sometimes it, it does not have, if we have special programs or transfers, let me make sure that what number we're budgeting.
It, it does, and that's what's even more concerning.
And I'll, I'll get with it. Casey and I will get together, because if there are some adjustments that need to be made, that's significant, we'll, we'll have those discussions.
Because, I mean, I don't want to see these campuses sit here at the beginning of the year, trying to find another AP, trying to find two more master, you know, teachers, and then that also brings, to my other point, these campuses we know that are going to be over 700, 800, that ratio is not 18 to 1. I know, I know for a fact right now, one of the middle high schools, that it's gonna be our second highest enrolled high schools. Their staff had a conversation, guess what, your core classes are gonna have 32 to 34 people in a class. And so that, to me, right now, I can't seem to get any kind of clarity from Dr. Gearing or anybody, like, what are we doing to ensure that every student's giving the opportunity and not being short-changed because of where they live? And so I know that's a big conversation, and I told, I just wanted to hit on it, like, I'm, it's driving me up the wall that we're trying to apply a uniform system to a district this large. And so I just, I, I will sit down and talk to you all day, I'm just, I need to understand why and reasoning why we're trying to set this up to fail.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, and just, I mean, and just reiterate, 18 to 1 is, has nothing to do with the classroom number. I mean, if you have a regular ed teacher and a special ed teacher in there, that, that, and 20 kids, that, that's gonna be a 10 to 1 ratio on a mathematical, and we know there's not one teacher with 10 kids in a class, so just, you know, it's, it's different, but you're right, if there are classes that are high, and I think we're still working through a lot of the master scheduling and some of the, it's a, you know, we have a system, and now there's double checking, and it's, it's, it's a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of massaging, a lot of moving, and it's gonna be a little angst right now, but, but we will follow up on the, particularly on the, on the, on the elementary issues as well. But no, we're, we are aware that there is some cheese being moved a little bit, and there is a little bit of uncomfortableness, but we are working, we, we're just, right now, we're just, let's, let's trust the process and see where we end up, and then we adjust accordingly at the end if needed, so.
On the uncomfortableness side of that, on slide 11, it lists the central admin cuts. And my concern here is one that has been brought up before, that of the That of the 20 some odd positions on this sheet, at least five of them were classroom facing. Most of them, if I remember correctly from the presentations, and like Trish said, it's after 10, so it might not be. These were positions that weren't even filled, so it actually isn't a cut. And I've asked this question to Anna's point, I've asked this question in email and haven't heard back on it. We received a list of central admin positions that are now being unfrozen. My question is, if we're already functioning without those positions and we're asking all of our, our campuses to cut back, why are we now releasing the budgets for these central admin positions? Most of which we don't need, when we could reallocate those budgets to put the APs back in these huge elementary schools that we've asked them to do without? We could, you know, put the campus technologists back? Or why are we opening budget money to more central admin positions? And I'm not talking about the police department or counseling services because those are vital. But there's admin assistant positions on this list. Why are we, I don't understand the process that was used to prioritize more central admin positions. And I understand we're lean, I get it. We are very, very lean. But when we're presenting, look at all these positions this central admin has cut when that's not actually what happened. And now we're, we're not doing anything to try and get more classroom facing. Because to Anna's point, when you're talking about elementary schools with that many kids in it, you've got a principal at a leadership meeting for four or five hours. And now you're down an AP, who's running, who's there if something happens? Because you're not, oh, only one thing is going to happen today and it'll be fine. What process was used to budget and open up more admin positions when we could have reallocated that to put these people back on the campuses?
Well, the process we used was, on the vacancy piece, those is whatever was vacant the day that Dr. Garing and we had the conversation, Dr. Garing said, "Everything's frozen." So we had a lot of vacancies. I would be a little nervous saying that those positions weren't needed or those, that we were functioning at the level we needed to be functioning. As you mentioned before, we are very lean at, at, at central admin. And that's one of the things that, if I remember correctly, I think we are 0.6% of our staff is central admin and the state average is 1.2. So we're 50%. And, you know, of all the districts, you know, speaking for myself, of all the districts I have been in, this is the one district that is very much, the, the, the district does not have the staff to support the campuses. And we've, special ed audit showed that with Stetson, the Moe and Casey staffing showed that as well. That we don't, we, we, we don't have the staff to provide to the camp. So what happens in that case? The campuses get frustrated and they want more positions. So we give more positions and what we might be able to do with 19 or 12 positions at central admin on a specific area, now we have 30 or 48 positions at the district because they're on campuses. Now we're spending three or four times this more. Now, there's some positions that need to be on a campus, absolutely. But there's a sweet balance because some need to be at central admin. And we're at half of, of the, of the central admin. So not trying to justify or, or get in a position, but I'm just saying, just because they were vacant, some of them may have only been vacant for a week, you know, they just left and then we froze a week later. We just weren't able to get them posted and get them hired by then. And somewhere, some may have been longer. I mean, I'm not going to say that they weren't longer as well. So all we went, we went through our process to reduce, we promised, we did $2 million at the central admin on personnel and then we did a million over to get to the million in department budgets to get to the three. And then what we did is we said, whatever on that list was, that was still vacant, that were just frozen, that we, we released most of those positions. We went through chiefs, we had that discussion, went through that list. If I remember correctly, not every position was, was, was released. I mean, if we had, I'm making this number up. If we had 30 positions on that list, we may have only posted 22. I mean, I just, I know that we did not post them all, but I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. So the process we used was, we did go through. We did say, "Hey, I've got these," for my example, 30 positions that were just frozen. Some were vacant for a long time, some maybe only a week or two. Which of these do we really need? Or, and sometimes we may have had four admin assistants and we only put two to hire and now they're split, they're doing double duty or they're helping with two different people. We were, well, we felt we're very cognizant of, of trying to make the best decision based on those positions. Because we didn't fill, we didn't, we didn't release all of them. You know, one of my, my senior director of procurement, he was, was caught up in that, in that frozen, you know. I went through that whole process and we were ready to, you know, to go to the next level and then it got frozen. And so that was not, that's, that was about two, two and a half months ago. So that's going to show up as a vacancy and it's going to be a long-term vacancy because it was vacant since July, since we went through all that process to, to go through the, the, that process and interview. And just right at the end, it got, it got frozen. That's going to look a little, that's going to skew some of that. But the process we did use was, we didn't just carte blanche. If it was there, it was vacant, we didn't approve it. We did go through it one by one, went through the positions and chiefs. And we only, we only filled the ones that we felt that we were, we could, we could do but not, not impede us, but also to get us to, so we, we could at least provide the best service we could with the monies that we had to our campuses. That's what the district is, we're here to support our campuses. That's what districts, that's what the district positions are for. So was it a perfect process? I, I can't say it was perfect. I say, I think we got it right when we got it wrong. And no matter what decision is made, there will be people that won't agree with it 100% on how, how it went. And we're still, this next year, one of the things we'll do is we are looking at all of our staffing guidelines to revamp and look at, you know, because we have some very unique things at Leander. It's not a, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, but it's very unique. And can we continue to afford those? And are there some things that we can do a little bit differently? So those are the conversations we're having and, and they're tough. And I know, and I'm not trying to, I mean, I'm not, you have, you ask a very sincere and, and, and tough question. Because it is, how do you, I mean, it's hard. How do you do a central admin position and, and not a campus position? Especially, you know, when our culture is students facing first. And, and so, you know, sometimes, you know, I heard a quote and this is, I'm just going to say because I heard the quote, but you know, sometimes putting students first doesn't look like putting students first, you know. And it's sometimes it's, I think that we, we understood that. And the positions that we did allow to go forward, we felt were the ones that were just the minimum enough to, to get us so we could provide the services that our campuses expect. We're still going to have to revamp everything and look at it through this next year. And it was a, it was not an easy discussion. Even for the CFO, it was an easy discussion because I know I'm not, my role is not normally seen as the, the, the instruction position all the time. So, but it was, it was very difficult and we were very selective, you know.
I think a, a, as we move forward and we know we're going to have to do this again, and something that I would like for us to consider when we're talking about district positions that are student-facing or campus supports, having some type of committee that also has campus people on that.
Yeah.
Because I think there were some positions that, you know, I'd love for principals or APs or counselors to be like, yeah, we really don't need this support. What, what would help us is this or this or, or just having some, I know we'll say, "We need this position because we need this position for campuses." I'd love for campuses to have some voice in, in that process. Because I, I think through this year, what as a, as a board, the majority of us can say is, we've heard a lot from campuses that have not been happy with this process, right? And, and what we've hearing from campuses and campus leadership is central office cut a lot of positions and a lot of the 2 million, a lot of the, the funds that they showed you, those were all people retiring. You know, they went through each position and said, "This is this person, they were retiring. This is this person." And then the actual staff that was removed was campus staff. And like, like Francesca said, so it was the camp, you asked admin to cut and they actually, the cut, we felt the cut that you asked them to cut, you know. We almost rather you not ask them to cut because they came back and then came back and cut our campus tech positions.
Yeah, they fell in the district category.
Yeah.
But they spent a lot of their time on campuses.
They fell in the district category, but they were actually almost 100% on, on a campus.
Yeah, one of our principals, I mean, I'll just, I'll give him credit, it was Charlie Little, made the comment in the high school principal meeting. He said, you know, "You guys are going to cut your departments, but when you cut your department budgets, those are the who we asked for funds to help us in the middle of the year with some of our needs." So now they're getting cut, they felt twice, which, which is legit, was a legit concern. You know, I could see, he had the foresight to see. When I, when he needs help, he asks, you know, curriculum instruction and he asks the people to help. Well, if their budgets are being cut, then they're not able to provide those, those services, whether it's personnel or if it's, it's supplies. So we have to be very careful in that balance and definitely
It was like librarians.
We'll have more people involved in the committees in the fall.
We cut library aides and then, and, and then we cut campus technology, who were the backups for, you know, who helped librarians.
The help on the library piece.
They helped in the library also. All I'm saying is, I, I, I hope that next time that there is voice from our campus in those decisions. Because the way it felt to campuses is admin made decisions of where to cut. They made them for our campus and then they said, "We have no positions to cut." "Oh, actually we do, it's the ones that are on your, your campus is where we're going to cut." And, and so I think that it's really important that we move, as we move forward, we know we're going to have to do this again, we've got to have campus voice in that process. And I'm, I'm, we're looking at you and you're taking a lot of this and, and I'm, I'm really looking at you, Bruce, that on the screen right below, right below Pete. And I know you're happy to answer for a lot of this, but.
No, I think we made a lot of decisions on a short timeline and we knew it was short. Going forward into this next year, I think we know we have a lot more time, that we can involve a lot more parties, parties and get a lot more feedback. And I think we'll end up getting a much better product and, and buy-in. I mean, just the reality of the situation was, when we realized this legislature is not going to, it's not going to happen. I mean, I hope I'm wrong, but we realized the risk is too much to assume that. We went into kind of, I mean, called overdrive. And I think we, we did what we felt was best in the time that we had. Going forward, I think we learned from that. There's definitely some things we would do differently and better if we, if we did it again and we know we're going to have to do it again. So definitely appreciate the feedback because going forward, whether or not we got that feedback, we had planned on bringing in more of the campuses piece, bringing in everybody else and looking at it holistically. Because you're right, if it's just, just because it says the district position, if it's one that, I only see them in the district office on Fridays because they're at campus Monday through Thursday, who does that hurt? That hurts the campus more than it hurts. So let's look at it, the big picture. And that's, that's what our goal is. And I think we, we have more time, we're going to, our runway is a lot longer this, this time going into it. So, and we've learned. We appreciate the feedback and I appreciate the, the staff that has reached out to you to, to express that so we can take that into consideration and improve.
Pete, I just want to echo the comments. Actually, one of the representatives read Dr. Garing's letter on the floor as they're adopting some bills. And one of the things that he wrote in his letter is, you know, that public school and, and, and all of our fabulous employees here at the district are, are victims of larger structural issues with public school finance. And so we, you know, we keep talking about what's going on at the state. It really does have real implications. And so as I'm looking at this number and, and, and doing the projected 2026, 27, as I'm looking at the sheet that you provided for us to lay out kind of what this might look like in the future, it appears to me, looking at these numbers, that there is no more fund balance that can be accessed because we're, we're hitting under. So we are, we are like right there at the neighborhood. Like really reach your hand out and you can see that we have concerns. And when you know that for the past few years, we've been trying to use that fund balance to get us to the next place, to where legislature would come in, the structural issues that have been made through state funding are not being addressed. And I actually wonder if they're being made worse through the session. And so given that, however, we got to where we are here, we're now needing to move forward. And we're going to need to do some real deep dives in these conversations. I don't know if it's a budget workshop, you know, I love those. But what I, I do want to make sure is that as a board, we understand the thoughtfulness that has gone into this and that you are able to be, get enough time to be able to do all this and to present to us all the pieces, because this does feel a little pieced out. So like I hear, you know, questions about central administration, like, "Yeah, but if you put this part over here, see how it all works." We didn't see all of how it works, right? And so you were, you were moving quickly. I just think the questions are signaling to us that we have some missing pieces. And Anna made a really good statement, I wrote it down because I love this quote. "It drives me up the wall to provide a, apply uniform system to a district this large." And yet we have this thing where it's like, we want to give defined autonomy. We want the campuses to make decisions. Yet we were just talking about with like math pathways, like, "Yeah, but we want district standards." And so where is, where do we really say, "We want central admin and, and we don't want to do this at a campus"? Where is camp, I just don't know if we're all on the same page. And we've got to figure out how we're going to address this structurally. So that's what I look for is more clarity so we're all on the same page. Because I do agree, I think there is this challenge of, let's not make, you know, each campus gets to have its own flavor, but we also have to adjust into a system wide. Like it's like, it's like yes and. And so I just, I'm hoping as we move forward, that you can give us some more of this intentionality and a bigger picture, because there are some, there are some blanks missing that just didn't connect.
No, definitely, I think we have room to improve. But, and I appreciate the feedback and, like I said, we have a much longer runway going forward. And I think we can do much, involve more and get more buy-in and, and come up with a, a, a system or changes that we all, what we all believe are best for students within the, unfortunately, the budget constraints that we have.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you. I know these were all tough conversations, so thank you for leading us through those. All right, y'all, that is our, wait, nope, we have item 6C5. Consider approval.
Yeah, budget amendment number 11?
Yep.
All right. Just real clear, the reason this is not a consent agenda, this is not a neutral one, but this does, this is a significant budget amendment, but it doesn't change the, the earlier presentation we had of $23.8 million. We're just moving, we have to have the budget. We have to move the budget around to make sure that no matter what we spend, the budget is, is above that. So it doesn't change that, that number, it's just on the budget side. So I mean, I'm not happy to answer any questions, I know it's, it's a large number, but it doesn't change.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve of the FY25 budget amendment number 11 as presented.
A second. Anna makes motion, Trish seconds. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
All right, thank you, Board.
Thank you. It is 10:38 PM and the Board will now go into closed session for the purpose permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privilege matter, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment reassignments, duties and evaluation of personnel and public officers. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel review of term probationary nonchapter 21 employment contract renewals for teachers and other professional educators. Texas Government Code 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection, audit refining, report findings. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the Board returns to open session. It is ten fifty eight P M and having no further business, this meeting of the Leander I S D Board of Trustees is adjourned.